The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
all of his contributions to our families and staff. Peter, who is Pivot Rock, has donated his time for the past eight years, including summers, as a math tutor at West High School. Additionally, he has provided funding that has supported and inspired GBAPS staff and students. The programs he hasn't funded include Inspiring Family Literacy in Native Families, which provides funding to bring in Native American authors to our Title VI Family Events; Promoting Water Drinking in an Environmental Education School, in which the funds were used to purchase refillable water stations as a part of the environmental education theme; Summer Libraries, where funds were used to purchase an inventory of books for young children to use and to check out during the summer months; during library hours or preschool storytime at Howe and Nicolay Schools; and a one-day acting workshop featuring an evening showcase. We want to thank you, Peter, for your support, your generosity, and inspiring us all. Thank you.
I just, I have a certificate of recognition, and I'd just like to read what it says. In recognition of, sorry, my glasses on. In recognition of Peter Cardinal with appreciation for inspiring staff and students through dedication of time and resources to Green Bay area public schools. And it's signed by our superintendent and myself. And we want to thank you for all that you've done for our students over the years. That's just, we're so appreciative of all the work and time and money that you've given to us. Now, have you come step forward? And then you want to say something? And the board actually will provide two opportunities during tonight's meeting to speak before the board. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items that are posted on tonight's agenda or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meeting laws prohibit the board from conducting business on matters brought during this open forum. The board will also permit public participation during agenda items that the Board of Education will be voting on, as noted on the board's agenda. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage and dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. Please keep your comments to five minutes. The timekeeper will let you know when your five minutes has ended. Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address. Lastly, demonstrations during public comments, such as clapping or cheering in response to either public comments or statements made by the board members, are prohibited. At this point, I don't have any forms that have been filled out, but is there anyone who would like to speak before the board? All right, seeing none, then we will move to our roll call. Sandy.
Becker.
Here.
Dorf.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Shilton.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Barbie.
Here.
All seven board members are present. We're also joined at the table to my left, Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent; to my far right, Jamie Barbian, who's the InterCity Student Council President from West, right? Yes. And my far left is Sandy Heller, our board secretary. And before we get started with our agenda, I would like to remind the public that you can view the board agenda and handouts, as well as minutes from past meetings, by visiting the district website at www.GBAPS.org. Click on Our District at the top, and then Board of Education on the left, and on that left menu, you will find a link to agendas and minutes. This link will take you to a website called Neptune, where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. All right, I would entertain a motion regarding board meeting minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes listed.
Second.
Sandy.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Dorf.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Shilton.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Barbie.
All seven board members are present. We're also joined at the table to my left, Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent; to my far right, Jamie Barbian, who's the InterCity Student Council President from West, right? Yes. And my far left is Sandy Heller, our board secretary. And before we get started with our agenda, I would like to remind the public that you can view the board agenda and handouts, as well as minutes from past meetings, by visiting the district website at www.GBAPS.org. Click on Our District at the top, and then Board of Education on the left, and on that left menu, you will find a link to agendas and minutes. This link will take you to a website called Neptune, where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. All right, I would entertain a motion regarding board meeting minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes listed.
Second.
Sandy.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Dorf.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Shilton.
Aye.
Carried 7-0. Then, there are no communications to be placed on file. Next is our monitoring reports, and that will be facilitated by Laura McCoy.
I believe we're going to be talking about class size progress in monitoring report. John Magness.
Good evening, and thanks for having us. And actually, I'd like Dr. Judy Wiegand and Andrea Lenwer to come up, if possible, to join me.
Thank you. If we have particular questions related to elementary or secondary that go into greater depth, they are working more currently with each situation at each school on a daily basis, even though we check in often. I want to make sure that the information is as fresh as possible. So tonight, we're sharing on our class size procedures, and basically, the, the, please click. I'm clicking, sorry.
See if they turn it off, maybe the last people use it every second.
No. Thank you. Sometimes it reaches from here, sometimes not. So I apologize for the delay. So, basically, we're here to provide the board with an update on class size, class enrollment, looking at different sections of courses we have, as well as to discuss our staffing process, so that you can get some idea on what goes on behind the scenes as we prepare for the coming school year. I know that the board had some questions in August, as we were moving through things. And August is generally a time of fluctuation, where we don't necess, we have a lot of students who are enrolling in, and some students are transitioning to other schools, and sometimes the numbers we have in the middle of August or the third week in August aren't as accurate as they would be at the end. As Mr. Dorf knows, sometimes you're still balancing a class size or hiring a new teacher that's going to decrease the section. Things of that nature have fluctuation. And so it's really about now that we've been able to address all the details of what is needed for staffing, and addressed our hotspots, and we've been able to see who has actually shown up for the classes, and who is new to the district, and who has transferred out. So that's why we're presenting our class size report, as well as to consider the effects of the scarce resources we have. The cost of staffing, it's expensive. It's the most important thing we do, though, however, because it's providing teachers and other supports to students. So we want to make sure that we do so as carefully as possible. And really, we'll also be talking about our next steps as well. What is it that we're planning to do to improve our systems overall, so that we can better staff, and make sure that we are meeting the needs of all students in the best way There are three policies and rules, two, one policy and two rules, basically, that are reflective of class size. And the first one, the class policy, gives information on just the general parameters for which we look at related to class size in our PK-12 system. This one doesn't have specific numbers mentioned, but it mentions a number of different criteria that we look at to make sure that we are following best practice. We also know that each situation is a bit different. It's not a black and white situation where we can say necessarily that at X number, it automatically means that we add, or at a lesser number that we don't, because there are different needs based on the student population in the classroom at the particular time, the resources within the school, as well as space within the school. Sometimes there isn't the physical space in which to add another classroom, so we have to explore other possibilities. But we're frequently, very frequently, looking at the needs on a day-to-day basis. Usually, around this time, we're checking the numbers three, four times a day, in the morning, the afternoon, because we want to make sure those numbers are as accurate as possible, and that the hotspots are addressed. So that is the policy. And then there are two rules. One is school staffing guidelines, and the other is class size procedures. They're relatively similar, but the difference is that the school staffing guidelines are the guidelines for the district office, and how we allocate staff to the buildings and the sites which provide services to the students. Whereas, rule number two is class size procedures, and that's more prescriptive as far as what guidance do we give principals in setting their course sizes. We also look at internal ratios that we use related to AGR, or Achievement Gap Reduction schools, and non-AGR schools. And then again, as I mentioned, there are a variety of other factors that we consider, based on student need, other supports in place, and things of that nature. So, if we're taking a look at our current class and section enrollments, we wanted to look at our averages and our focus schools. So what are we seeing throughout the district, in the different grade levels, in the different schools that we service, as far as AGR schools and non-AGR, as well as a look at secondary? We did, Mr. Becker, you submitted some questions to us this afternoon that I think are great questions that will allow us to look a little more deeply into the data. This is meant to be sort of a 500-foot or 1,000-foot view of what we have in the system, but we can definitely go deeper and provide more information that's broken down even further. So Andrea will share related to the average sizes for elementary, and I'm pulling that up here on the screen.
Thank you, John. For the averages for the elementary class sizes, we took the data on 9/11/18. So we wanted to be consistent with a point in time when we-
Can you, sorry, can you pull the microphone closer?
You bet.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Probably.
So we took a point in time, and we used 9/11/18 as that point in time at the end of the day. So our averages for the AGR schools, and again, AGR is Achievement Gap Reduction, where we're looking at the three different strategies. The coaching, job embedded coaching, in the area of literacy and/or math. The tutoring, which is what DPI refers to as intervention, and that can be one-on-one or small group. And then also a combination, those two strategies with classroom size. It's when we moved in 2015-16 school year from Sage to AGR, Achievement Gap Reduction, we lifted the size of 18 or 30 to two teachers. So our averages for the Achievement Gap Reduction schools, kindergarten, the average size is 18. Grade one is 16, grade two 16, grade three 16, grade four 16, grade four 22, grade five 23. The next chart that you see are classroom sizes. They are all district K through 5. So we took an aggregate of all of the classrooms in our K through 5 elementary schools, and we broke it down into size categories. The first category, 10 to 15. The second category, 16 to 20, 21 to 25. And then we broke it down 26, 27, and 28. So you can see the numbers up there, how many of our classrooms at the elementary level fall into each one of those size categories. You're going to see, when you look down at, on the left-hand side, 26 students, you'll see that grade one Aldo Leopold, grade two Aldo Leopold have 26 in them. We are in the process of hiring a math teacher part-time for those classrooms. And it really has to do with how Aldo Leopold is configured into multi-age groupings, that we want to separate them for the math. The teachers are taking on new learning this year with the new Bridges curriculum, and so we want them to be in straight grades for math. You will also see that grade one Wikwiak has students, class size of 26. Ann Barsh has met with the classroom teacher and with the principal, and they feel, due to the compensation of the classroom, they feel that, including the teacher, recommends that they stay at 26, that they do not break that group of children up. You'll also see on the right-hand side, grade four, second grade, both Langley and Eisenhower, and then grade five, Jefferson, DaVinci, and Smith. Both Jefferson and Eisenhower are in the process of looking at the configuration of students. Eisenhower has been approved for a paraprofessional. It is a bilingual classroom that has 26, two classrooms that have 26, so they will be hiring a para. In addition to that, Jefferson, we went in and looked at, met with Kate, talked to Dolan, the principal, talked through the students. There are two self-contained students that only join the classrooms for specials, so they will be remaining at 26. Then Langley, DaVinci, and Red Smith are all within at 26. They're within our staffing guidelines. 27 students. If you look at third grade, both Martin and Doty have 27 students. Martin Elementary is in the process of hiring a paraprofessional to support in the two classrooms. They have some unique challenges in those classrooms. They have autism, children identified with autism, that they fill a paraprofessional. The goal is to mainstream those students, so the goal is to support with a paraprofessional. Then also-
So when we see three sections with 27 students, that means that one of the schools has two sections with 27.
Correct. Thank you, John, for that clarification. Grade five, you'll see that there are four schools, Tank, Wilder, and Red Smith. Those classrooms, Wilder, they are in the process of hiring a paraprofessional, also due to the needs there. And then Tank School is an AGR school, so they're in the process of hiring a teacher. It has been approved since last week, so they're in that process. At this time, we do not have any sections. Let me rephrase that. As of 9/11/18, we did not have any sections with 28. We are monitoring some of the schools. There are children who may be, they could be in Mexico or still on vacation. Social workers have been reaching out to those families. The next chart that you see is the classroom sizes for AGR only. So we disaggregated the averages, the classroom averages, looking at where are their Achievement Gap Reduction classrooms, where are they sitting for numbers? And you can see that the majority of the students' class size in those classrooms are anywhere between 10 and 15, and 16 and 20. You'll see as we get into fourth and fifth grade, that they may be between the numbers of 21 and 25. That is within our guidelines for Achievement Gap Reduction schools. Then you will see that we do have one fifth grade that is at 27 students. That is Tank Elementary. And Tank is in the process of hiring. You'll see that we have one fourth grade that is at 26 students. They're in the process. Ann Zernik is interviewing tomorrow for a paraprofessional in that bilingual classroom.
And you'll note that this chart is broken down a little further than the one that was in the original document that was sent. Mr. Becker had some questions that we were able to partially address between this afternoon and now, so that is a reflection of one of the changes that we've made since then.
I'm sorry, what are the elementary guidelines for regular and for AGR?
I'm going to pull that up right now. It's a great question, Mr. Becker. So we have two different points in time when we're looking at staffing guidelines for the elementary classrooms. We have, we start staffing in February of the previous year, and we go all the way until the start of the school year. At that time, kindergarten and grade one, we staff at 25. AGR, kindergarten and grade one is at 20. Non-AGR, grades two and three are at 25. AGR, grades two and three are at 22. Moving into fourth and fifth grade, again, there are AGR schools. There are, they do not fall under the AGR guidelines set out by the DPI under state statute, but we still keep those numbers lower. Fourth and fifth grade, non-AGR is at 28. AGR, fourth and fifth grade is at 25. Yes, Rhonda?
Can you, just for people listening or watching, can you explain what AGR is a little bit further?
Sure. Absolutely. So AGR is a state grant. It is Achievement Gap Reduction. The goal is to look at job embedded strategies to support continuous school improvement. In the past, Sage was the exact same grant, but it was all about classroom size and community involvement. Once you reached 18, if you went over the 18, if you went to 19, you by law, by state statute, needed to hire an additional teacher. Sage has been around for approximately 15 years. The research around class size reduction without job embedded strategies such as coaching and intervention, which is part of our MLSS, Multi-Level Systems of Support, we know that class size without that additional support is not as effective. So the state of Wisconsin, in the 2015-16 school year, they converted the Sage grants to what is called AGR, Achievement Gap Reduction, and that is where a district does not need to adhere to the 18 max in a class, that you can, as long as you are identified, schools have both a coach and intervention, that they are able to lift that class size. Collectively, as a team, we made the decision to continue to keep those sizes lower than the non-identified AGR schools. The AGR schools identified in the Green Bay School District are Dan's, Eisenhower, Fort Howard, Howe. I'm going alphabetically, so if I miss one, I'll come back to it. After Howe, there is Nicolay, Sullivan, Tank. We also have the ELC, the Early Learning Center. It is not identified as an Achievement Gap Reduction school by the state of Wisconsin. However, because we feed into, that school feeds into AGR schools, we're allowed to count those kids. The other school is Lincoln and Jefferson, the other two schools that I missed.
So there's actually no, there's actually no reference to a separate staffing level for AGR and policy and rules, or did I miss it? I understand there's one that you're using, but I thought-
So it's an internal measure that we use? It's not something that is mandated within policy or rule at this time?
I believe that in our policy, there is reference to Sage. That has not, we have not updated that policy. We are in the process of working through, there are other considerations with class size that we're in the process of looking at.
It says, "Class size in schools participating in special governmental programs will be consistent with guidelines established for such programs." And then it does give, as an example, Sage, but it doesn't specifically say the numbers. It just says that, again, within policy, that will be consistent within those guidelines.
So each year, we set, as a team, we set what those guidelines will be, and that is what we were just talking about. I do have a document that demonstrates that, that we use in our meetings starting in February.
So basically, the state, the Department of Public Instruction realized that class size is a factor, and that is a strategy that we can use, and we do use, but there are multiple factors that have an effect. So it's really giving a couple, three tools to Achievement Gap Reduction, other than just class size reduction. We, as a district and as a community, have reflected that class size is something that is very important to us, especially given the high needs of our students, and so that is something we've still addressed. And you can see where our class sizes, the vast majority of them are under 20.
The other point in time, yes, Rhonda?
So I had a parent reach out to me. Her child was in a third grade class at Webster, and initially, I think it was 18, 17 for two classes, and then they moved a teacher to first grade, and then they combined the class. So is there supposed to be a class with 26 students? Is Webster, did that not continue that way? Was there a shift? Is there a class at Webster with 26 students? Because she's saying that her third grader is now in a class with 26.
It would not be, it's not at 26 on our staffing sheets right now. That does not mean that after 9/11 that that number went up. Ann Barsh looks very closely. Webster is one of her schools. She works very closely with Nancy Schultz, the principal, and would be, if that classroom did go up, 26 is within the guidelines for third grade. It is at 25. So she would be working with Nancy Schultz to see what other supports there are for that classroom, if indeed it's at 26. One of the things that we really look at is that oftentimes, and John mentioned it earlier, we, at this time of the year, we might show on staffing sheets or on a classroom roster that there are 26 students, but there may only have a 24, 25 who actually are attending. When we looked into, this year, we had quite a few schools where that happened, where we had additional students on rosters. When we looked into it, we do know that we have a more mobile community, and we have many people who are moving outside of the Green Bay School District. They are registering for classes the day before, the day of the start of school. We do not unenroll them from our rosters until we receive a records request from the Wisconsin district or an out-of-state district that they are attending. So we work very closely with the principals to make sure that we have accurate numbers of students that are in our classrooms.
So when these kids come back, you said maybe they're in Mexico or they're on vacation. Are we going to get an update on that at all?
Yeah. The second point in time that I was referencing earlier, that we look again at student enrollment, is the third Friday count. So we do have a process in place, a school-based problem-solution, class-size relief team that is referenced in policy, where Ms. Barsh, myself, and now Ms. Willams would work with the principal.
Her child was in a third grade class at Webster, and initially, I think it was eighteen, seventeen for two classes, and then they moved a teacher to first grade, and then they combined the class. So, is there supposed to be a class with twenty six students? Is Webster, did that not continue that way? Was there a shift? Is there a class at Webster with twenty six students? Because she's saying that her third grader is now in a class of twenty six.
It would not be, it's not at twenty six on our staffing sheets right now. That does not mean that after nine eleven, that that number went up. Ann Barsh looks very closely, Webster is one of her schools. She works very closely with Nancy Schultz, the principal, and would be, if that classroom did go up. Twenty six is within the guidelines for third grade. It is at twenty five. So, she would be working with Nancy Schultz to see what other supports there are for that classroom, if indeed it's at twenty six. One of the things that we really look at is that oftentimes, and John mentioned it earlier, we, at this time of the year, we might show on staffing sheets or on a classroom roster that there are twenty six students, but there may only have a twenty four, twenty five who actually are attending. When we looked into, this year, we had quite a few schools where that happened, where we had additional students on rosters. When we looked into it, we do know that we have a more mobile community, and we have many people who are moving outside of the Green Bay School District. They are registering for classes the day before, the day of the start of school. We do not unenroll them from our rosters until we receive a records request from the Wisconsin district or an out-of-state district that they are attending. So, we work very closely with the principals to make sure that we have accurate numbers of students that are in our classrooms.
So, when these kids come back, you said maybe they're in Mexico or they're on vacation. Are we going to get an update on that at all?
Yeah. The second point in time that I was referencing earlier, that we look again at student enrollment, is the third Friday count. So, we do have a process in place, a school-based problem-solving, class-size relief team that is referenced in policy, where Ms. Barsh, myself, and now Ms. Willams would work with the principal. We would look, some of our classrooms have part-time coaches in them as observation or model classrooms. Some of them have additional team-taught, special education teachers, or other parents that are spending the majority of their day in that classroom. So, in the past, we have gone into our schools with the principal. We've held team meetings where the teachers come in, they provide us with data. The main reason that we do that is that when our kids are together in a classroom community, they're getting to know the teacher throughout the school year. To all of a sudden divide them and half remove them from the lead teacher that they have been working with, sometimes that is not the best solution. So, we look at all variables and look at what is best for that school and that individual classroom.
That would actually be an interesting thing to have an update on as well, if there is ever a situation where, you know, the class-size relief in the board policy actually has to meet, configure something, and then there are findings and possible adjustments.
Absolutely. We can share with you at a later date, case studies of where we have met with principals and school-based teams to really address class-size relief without the hiring of a teacher, where it's been successful.
So, how many, how many times in the, over the last several years, has the, has an official class-size committee been convened per the actual one specified in policy?
The one specialist that is specified in policy really addresses when a teacher's classroom goes over, I believe it's twenty seven in policy, where they do meet. At the time that the policy was written, we were looking at special education students and counting their FTEs. So, if you had a student, their FTE enrollment was a hundred percent, sixty percent of their day was spent in a special education classroom, we would only count that FTE as forty percent. So, you might have thirty, thirty-one actual students in the classroom, but the identification, the amount of time spent in the special education environment was removed. We did away with that about five years ago. We actually feel that it is more important to look at the overall general makeup of that classroom and the size. So, if you have thirty students and three of them are fifty percent in the special education classroom, that student is considered a full FTE in the classroom. I have not, since my role in the past five years, have not been a part of the class-size relief that is outlined in policy. We created a class-size relief when we lifted the FTE, and the AGR went from Sage to AGR. I have been involved in three of those thus far, in the past four years.
So, I'm not sure if we're referring to the same things. You were talking mostly about special ed, which is also important, but this would be the three forty-three point two rule one.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up.
And that would be D, where it essentially says that a teacher can just request a class-size relief meeting for grades K through six. That'd be four, three forty-three point two, that's rule two. This would be three point, three forty-three point two, rule one.
I have been involved in three of them in the four years that I have been in this position. Now, the majority of the schools that I work with are the achievement gap reduction, so we really watch that, those numbers. In addition to that, for each one of those, it's the principal who really is working with the classroom teacher who brings concerns forward to the executive director. And then, that's when we create the team, and we go out into the school and ask the teacher to bring the data. We meet with the classroom teachers and the other specialists who are assigned to that school.
Okay, so, there's a, there's a district, there's a district class-size committee that has, for hearing appeals? And you're saying there were three of those, or?
They are not, they were not appeals. It was when the numbers went above the guidelines that we use for staffing after third Friday count. Then, the teacher and the principal, so the principal would contact the executive director. We would be the designee of the associate superintendent. They would contact us, and then we would go into the schools and lead or facilitate the problem-solving team. I have not been a part of a situation where a teacher has appealed and has not been satisfied with the decisions that have been made.
Rhonda? So, if I hear you correctly, you, after the third Friday count is when that, or that request comes in out of the policy.
Correct.
Before that, you're monitoring and changing things in classrooms.
Every day.
Constantly, from about the middle of August until the third Friday.
Beth Jones.
And then, after that, we hope that everything has settled down, but there are occasions when we have people move in and class sizes change, and that's when that committee goes into effect.
That's when that committee goes. So, we're looking at enrollment and staffing daily. Beth Jones, our executive assistant, by eight AM every morning, has a document for us that pulls right out of Infinite Campus, our data information system. And it, our HR department has written a formula years ago where it interfaces with our staffing that is pulled out of BI-Tech, and it gives us class-size average. The reason that we don't do it prior to the third Friday count is that there is so much mobility that is happening. Our numbers fluctuate, as John referenced earlier.
And if you'll take a look through the rest of the information that's shared, you'll see that we try and address the situations quite seriously, and it is rather costly. We've added millions of dollars in the past couple of years, and I'll outline that further. But here are just a few things that we did after the school year started, so that things could be addressed before we needed to invoke a formal committee, because we, it makes sense for us to solve the problem as soon as possible, rather than have something linger and then make a change later in the year when it has greater effect on the students to move them. So, if you'd like to walk us through that, Andrea?
So, since nine four eighteen, what has been approved as ads since this first day of school, Nicolay has a para in kindergarten bilingual. In addition to that, grade four Eisenhower bilingual has a para. Grade five Tank, this week, was approved for a teacher. We went back and forth between a para and a teacher. For very specific reasons on classroom composition, we made the decision to hire a teacher. Aldo Leopold, a point five teacher. Martin, a para in third grade. And then, in fifth grade, Wilder was approved a para, and MacArthur, a teacher. I want you to know that the MacArthur number is not above the guidelines that we use for staffing. However, they're right there at the max, and they have very small classrooms, very small classrooms. If you have been there, they're pie-shaped, and you'll understand that twenty seven students at MacArthur in a classroom was high. And so, there is another teacher who is being added at MacArthur.
She was just having trouble trying to figure out how she was going to build over bridges, because you need space for that as well. So, it was a good decision.
And with the open concept similar to Baird, which is being redesigned, probably about twenty percent of the rectangle is shaved off by the hallway due to the class structure. So, there's a lack of space there, so that was the factor.
You will also see that we have schools that we keep on a watch list when their numbers are encroaching the maximum number. Right now, Howe kindergarten, grade two Nicolay bilingual, and then, grade five Redsmith. And again, this is a point in time, so from nine eleven, we could be looking at more ads.
I know, and for high school, it looks like it's an option that can be used, but does it ever happen where you actually transfer a student to another school?
That's a great question, Rhonda. We did do that this year. We, at Nicolay, struggled in, with some of our bilingual classrooms. We don't have, it's a human resource capacity. We don't have certified bilingual teachers. So, we did, at Nicolay, Matt Heller, the principal, and I worked with transportation to identify students who live close to Sullivan and Howe, which are bordering districts. And then, we provide transportation as outlined in our policy, and we were able to find some students in first grade that were able to move to Sullivan to lower the class size at Nicolay, so that we would not have to hire a teacher. We do that through a lot of conversations with parents and making sure that it's a right move for that student. In addition to that, Keller Elementary has students who are being bused to Chapel. Again, parents willing, voluntarily wanted to do that. And then, Howe Elementary, we actually only had six bilingual students in kindergarten prior to the start of the school year. So, Claudia Orr personally called all of those families, and we are transporting those children to Doty Elementary Kindergarten, which also had low numbers. They had thirteen students. So, they now have a classroom composition of nineteen, which is a real solid number for kindergarten in a non-AGR school. Again, it's about the communication with the parents and helping them understand why we need to do what we're doing. And we have not had a strong pushback on that at this point. We've had all very positive responses. Katie?
Go ahead. When you make those accommodations for that year, will those accommodations continue for the future years if the parents want to keep their child in that school?
Yes, and that's a great question. That is what we ask the parents. We know that, especially in kindergarten and first grade, once they're embedded in that school, they develop relationships with not only the staff, but with the parents of the other children, plus the children become really connected with the classroom community. And so, it is an option to remain there through the end. We track them all the way through if they choose to do that. They do have an option if there is space available back at the home school. They do have an option also to go back. So, we give them as much choice as we can within the guidelines of our staffing.
Does the choice include transferring siblings if family is?
Yes, yes.
So, you could, you do the whole family?
When we, when we needed to move a teacher from Howe to another school, because there were only six children, and we bused those children to Doty, we gave parents an option if they wanted to bring the rest of their children there. Now, that is always contingent on class size. We can't collapse a kindergarten and then put first or a second grade at real high numbers because of siblings. But it's, they then have the option to apply for intra-district transfer during our window the following year. So, our goal is to keep families together. We know it's best practice, and whenever we can, we keep them together and we bus them.
And we don't make these decisions lightly. We realize that this is really important to families, really important to the community. And so, if we're making a decision, we're trying to make sure that it's going to be something that can be sustained over time, because we don't want to be adding teachers and pulling them back. It's important to have those structures in place, and that's part of the reason why we monitor things on a, multiple times per day, to make sure that it's the right choice. And it's also a reason why, in our strategic planning that you'll see later in our presentation, that we have plans on working on improving our registration processes and information gathering processes. So, hopefully, we'll have some of the information sooner, so that we can make better calculations sooner in the month of August. What happens quite often is, people are busy, families are traveling, things of that nature, and people aren't always thinking about registration until they see notification of open house or friends are starting to go to school, and that's when sometimes we find out there have been some shifts, and we end up with significant population change during those weeks.
One of the things you said, Andrea, I think is important to have a little more discussion around in terms of knowing that the teacher is the most important to the child's student achievement and learning. Can you speak just a little bit about the concerns and difficulties that we may, that we have experienced with finding high-quality bilingual teachers in a competitive area that's everyone wants the same teacher?
We, as a team, believe strongly in bilingual education. We believe that every child, when the state of Wisconsin has a state statute that when you hit a certain threshold, that you provide education in their first language, that that's, and there's a variety of different models that school districts are able to design to meet the needs of the children they serve. We have found that in the past four to five years that I've been in this position, that every year, we are needing to either emergency license or permit license teachers based on their ability to, their skill to speak Spanish. And we know that through all the research that we have done on continuous school improvement, that the quality of the teacher is the number one impact influence on a student's success. We do know that when we permit teachers who have not been through high-quality education programs, that they do not have method courses, they do not have student teaching where they've been mentored by an experienced and highly qualified teacher. So, Julie Seepfels, along with Claudia Orr, have done a tremendous job. They will start, as soon as third Friday count is done, they start recruiting from all over the US looking for highly qualified. Green Bay is a fabulous community. It's a fabulous community to live. We need to continue to pull in our diverse, our teachers from different ethnicity who want to come to Green Bay and teach for us. We have had lots of people come from Chicago and Milwaukee. We still do not have enough to fill our positions. John Magus, along with Nancy Chartier, will at some point be talking about some program changes within our bilingual programming that we have had to do based on, one, the lack of resource, human resource, so highly qualified teacher, but also on what we're finding as we're studying our kids longitudinally, how they're doing when they get into sixth through twelfth grade. I can just anecdotally tell you that I had two phone calls today, and then also a face-to-face meeting with the principal, who is working through combining some of the upper grades in a two-teacher model, where it's ESL-trained and a bilingual teacher. And then Eisenhower, where they also have been combining our children, both the bilingual children and English-only children. And they're just getting great results the first two weeks of school. Behaviors have really turned themselves around. The kids are integrated and really supporting one another. So, everything so far, even the teachers, have been telling principals that they feel like we're, this is the right driver for continuous school improvement, based on the variables and the needs that we've identified in our district. So, more to come on that. John will be giving you more information on that.
And a couple of elements that we've done to address the bilingual teacher pipeline, as well as other need areas. One is targeted Facebook advertising. We put together an advertising campaign and did Facebook advertising in the Chicago and Milwaukee markets within the Latino teacher community. So, there were Facebook ads targeted directly to people, so that they might consider coming up to this area. Quite often, if you target far across the country, you don't have as good of luck traditionally with people coming and staying for a long period of time. Other districts have had some pretty extensive measures where they've gone to foreign countries and recruited people here, and what happens quite often is, it's a pretty expensive investment, and quite often, somebody will only stay for a few months and decide Wisconsin's more cold than they thought, or that it's not a, not always a fit, or sometimes they'll come, people will come over here, and then they'll be recruited by another district. So, the effort is made by one district, and then there's a recruitment to another area. Another important element that we're working on, that we've started the foundations of, is a grow your own diverse workforce, where we're looking at our own bilingual students and thinking of a career path for our own bilingual educators here through partnership with higher ed, so that we have students that are emerging as high school students, going into the teacher pipeline that way, and also thinking about our para professional staff who may have some education already, an associate's degree, or perhaps even a bachelor's degree, but not the teaching licensure, and allowing different opportunities for them to access structures as well. So, those are a couple of things that we have in mind. And I just want to say, as far as the tenants of bilingual education, my own personal experience as an educator was in bilingual education and EL. Lived in Mexico for a couple of years, and my master's degree is in bilingual education. And I say that partly because I want to assure... And I say that partly because I want to assure the board and the community that as we consider changes and make changes in, in our bilingual education structure, it's not done lightly nor is it done with any thoughts on trying to erode the tenants of bilingual education. We want to make it better and stronger given, given the resources we have. All right. And my mouse is not working the best, but I'm moving slowly. So we have secondary. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Good evening. For the middle school and high school report, these are just straight mathematical averages. And so for our high schools, these would be our four comprehensive high schools of East, West, Southwest, and Preble. And on the right-hand side, you'll see our middle school. Those do include not only the four comprehensive middle schools but also our K-8 schools, grades six, seven, and eight. Again, just a straight mathematical average. So again, starting with our core, at the high school level, you'll see the averages in English, math, science, and social studies. Then going into middle level, you'll see the sixth-grade house core and right above that, the seventh and eighth grade core. Sixth grade is the only grade that we have houses where seventh and eighth it is not. I should stop at this point and state this is data from September 12th. And I also have to say a huge thank you to Tina Nowak. I think she is here behind us and she's been very, very supportive as I learn, Green Bay and our system. And she provided this in an Excel sheet and then helped set up a pivot table. So again, going back to our high school, middle schools, and then you see the core and then down, down below you will see the elective course offerings. And again, art, business. I'll add that business at the middle level, you'll see is a little bit higher on that you would expect. For our middle schools, when I came on, August 6th, started dealing with issues related to finding certified family consumer science teachers. And at Edison and at Franklin really struggled and so we had to find other options. Had to ask the counselors to pull up those students who are registered and take a look at their second and third choices for courses. So needed to schedule the students into some sort of elective. So again, going on with foreign language, health, music, physical education, technical education, and then agriculture at our high schools. And as I have been trying to develop a deeper understanding of our system, certainly working very closely with the principals and asking them to stay in touch regarding any concerns that they had. And certainly they are very open about wanting extra staff if needed. And so for example, at Southwest, they knew they were having an issue with algebra, brought forth the request to add, do an overload in order to reduce the class sizes in algebra. Working just this beginning, or this week as well as at the end of last week with West High School in science and physical science and biology, again, just carefully monitoring, especially in our lab classes, to see if those class sizes are staying within the guidelines. And also for the middle and the high schools when it comes to the 150 student load for each teacher and asking the principals to closely monitor that and to let me know if there are issues or concerns with the student load per teacher. And if there are questions, mine is not obviously as detailed per school as the elementary.
I have a quick question. This is in general with your enrollment, do we look at student numbers? Are student numbers in comparison to other districts of similar size either in the state of Wisconsin or nationally? Is that data available? And how do you, if it is, how do you integrate that into your analysis of how well we're doing?
I think that that would be something that would be very interesting to explore in a formal basis. I think for those of us coming from other districts, we're, to be quite honest, pretty, pretty impressed with, with the staffing ratios here. I'm more familiar with, with middle school numbers in, in the thirties, low thirties sometimes. I, I remember teaching college or high, high school Spanish class with thirty-seven kids in at one time. I'm not saying that's best practice, nor am I saying that that's what we are moving towards. I'm saying that we're grateful for the board and the community's response in allowing us to do our best to keep class sizes low. I do think though, that it would be good for us to take a look and see how that compares to other districts. I think as well, if you look at some of our staffing increases that you'll see in a few minutes, it's not just staffing of the, the staff member that's in front of the, the students at that time. There are also relatively decent ratios and higher ratios than, than other places related to nurses, social workers, counselors than in some of the other districts in, in which I've worked. And I think you'd-
I would agree with my previous district. These class sizes are very nice. But it's a good question to ask when it comes to how do we compare to other school districts, our size, and what does that look like?
So this is a general question for anyone. I've had people ask about the referendum relation to class size. Was there ever conversation, I'm not remembering, regarding class, specific about class size with the referendum?
The message was the referendum would allow us to maintain the class sizes we currently had. We would not have to increase class sizes if the referendum passed.
So even with the, go ahead, Ms.-
We were going to have to, without, without the operational referendum, we were going to cut how many positions?
A hundred and fifty.
A hundred and fifty, upward of a hundred and fifty positions. So it was to maintain what we had. What's interesting is I know that there, there was a neighboring district that actually cut that year. We were able to pass a referendum. They subsequently have passed theirs and so, you know, it, but ours was never to, to, ours was to maintain and just hang on. I mean, it, and it was really intended to align with the gap between the state, the revenue ceiling. So there was a real reason for that dollar amount that's saying if we can just get to the state average. So we didn't want to, to overreach, but at the same time felt that we could manage within this framework, you know? So it was never intended to reduce class size from where I sit.
But it was, it was never intended to make sure they didn't increase as well?
Well, they, they would have increased markedly had we had, had to cut a hundred and fifty positions.
Yeah, what, what positions were they?
In all areas.
All areas, across the board. Higher, we, we did look at cutting as much as possible that would not be directly supporting of students, but there are things that, that are in place as far as job embedded professional development, counselor support, social workers, things of that nature. Administration definitely was, was one of the main areas.
Absolutely.
That if we cut those, those elements, that there would, there would also potentially be less support in that area. In addition, even though we were able to save those positions, we, we did still reduce our budget significantly by, I can't remember the, the number of millions of dollars, but I think six million dollars, I want to say, three, six million dollars that we still, four, sorry, between the two, four million dollars that, that we, we still reduced even though we had the referendum. So the referendum passed and it, it saved a lot of jobs with the operational referendum, but we still, in order to preserve what we had, ended up cutting another four million dollars out of other areas to make sure that these ratios were in place. You'll also see in a few minutes that we've not only sustained, we have added multiple millions of dollars of support. And I can come to that in a moment after, after we finish.
If, if, if I could offer, I think one of the pieces to bear in mind is that enrollment has been staying relatively flat. So there hasn't, it's, it's been relatively flat, so there wasn't a big influx of students. One of the opportunities as we go out and look very carefully at our schools right now in terms of how we deliver services is to really think about programming and such so that we, we can find ourselves, for example, in a school that may have very small class sizes because they only have one section and you certainly wouldn't run a first-grade class of large numbers. So we do divide those, but then we're looking sometimes, these averages may not tell the whole story because there's a range involved. So, so we're looking at that in terms of and, and doing a deep study into what the boundary committees looked at, what the facilities task force looked at because there is no flexibility in a one, one-class school. You know, so if thirty-five children show up, then they have, or thirty children in one class, you don't run that. You run two fifteens and those kinds of things. So it, it puts, it may put some other classes larger and others smaller depending upon the number. So that's part of the balance piece that we have to run everything. And so then when you talk about opportunity to, to consolidate, if parents are willing, there's some opportunity and that's what Andrea described around our bilingual program to develop, to bring forward a high-quality program that parents really wanted for their children. So it's a constant movement of the work.
And we've gone through this more or less through our conversations, but as, as I mentioned before, we do have fluctuating enrollment. And as we, things fluctuate, we monitor on a daily basis, multiple times a day actually quite often. And we, we also are asking principal input on a regular basis. We had, just today even, that we were checking with multiple principals on, on hotspot areas to make sure we're, you know, were we actually at the number that, that we, we needed to add or were we one shy or did we have too many? So we're, we're constantly assessing to make sure that we have accurate information. Then we also work, as we said before, with the school teams and the executive directors to evaluate potential solutions, which may or may not be including of adding a teacher. We might look at having a paraprofessional or splitting and supporting them in other, other ways. But then we do reallocate and add staff as needed. Sometimes it's reallocation and shifting of staff, but quite often it's, it's been an addition. That addition does, does cost money. It's pretty, it's a pretty serious impact to the budget, but it's something that, that we have worked hard to support and believed in and moving forward. So there are considerations for the board as well. As far as when we, when we think about policy, we think about rules and procedures, different things to think about. And these, I don't mean to, to say that these are the only considerations, but things to think about are first and foremost, the needs of the students, the needs of the students and the schools. We have increasing needs and individualized needs of our schools and our students and also the district as a whole. As we have, you've seen some of the demographic change presentations we've done, it, it takes more, just as an example, to educate somebody who's coming in as a junior in high school who hasn't had an opportunity for exposure to school or is a, and is a second language learner as you would an average student in an average class. So sometimes there are additional resources that are needed to make sure that we're, we're getting the job done of making sure that all students are college and career ready. Those individual needs of the schools and students are our first priority. Then of course, we take a look at and, and work with our class size policies and procedures, thinking about what guidelines we have in place, what policies and procedures are there. And we did note that there are a few things that should change within the policy if, for nothing else, to change some of the wording of, from, moving from SAGE to achievement gap reduction and some things of that nature. But I think that there's also an opportunity for us to review and revise and think about what that can look like for moving forward. The third piece is thinking about what does the current research say? What are some of the indications of current research related to the effects of class size? There, there are indications that it can have an effect in certain areas and there are indications that, that certain areas have less effect. So how can we use that information to make sure that if we're targeting additions, that we're really being thoughtful about what that targeting looks like to, to make sure that it's having the greatest impact? Andrew?
So I guess part of, and the, the fact, you know, the fact that I've advocated for the, the policy is to include certain points that are a hard cap on class size isn't reflective of anything I find lacking with looking at creative solutions. I, I have every, every reason to believe that that's being done quite well and thoughtfully. But if I, you know, going to the, going to the public, if, if I were to ask someone who's concerned about their students' class size, I've had, haven't had any direct concerns brought to me about that this year. But say someone's in one of the elementaries with, with twenty-seven and they say to me, "Well, Andrew, before I, before I complain here, tell me, tell me what are the rules." It's like, okay, well, if I'm trying to talk to someone about the, the rules, first we have, in policy, we have a reference to a one to twenty-five student ratio, mentioned twice. I'll just keep it simple, using elementary numbers. I go to three forty-three point two, rule one, and it says the staffing guideline will be one teacher to twenty-five students. An effort will be made to ensure that no individual class will exceed thirty students and no combination class will exceed twenty-five. Then there's some, I also, I also don't feel that the, although there is more flexibility with AGR and it's not tied strictly to the SAGE guidelines, I think there's probably an expectation in the public that most of these SAGE schools would be there and, and I think maybe the, the percentage outside of those bounds maybe is, is climbing up a little bit more. I guess I would feel more comfortable if, if in addition to this, there were some, some points were to be defined where we would say, this is where the, the board has said we're, we're willing to spend the money. If, if this happens, we don't, we aren't asking you to be creative. If this happens, we are saying that you have our support to invest in splitting the class or potentially support. For example, I'm sure no one at this table ever intends for a class to hit thirty students and if it ever had to, because there were thirty-one kids in third grade at a building that didn't have another room, certainly you would do some kind of two-teacher arrangement or, obviously. But yet there's no, it's not a requirement. There, there really is nothing, there is nothing binding in policy that says you must not have an elementary class of thirty-five. Am I worried that any of you will propose that? Of course not. I'm not worried that anyone here would propose that. But I think policy, you know, the creative solutions are there, but I, I think, I think I advocated during the election period, I was suggesting in my, one of my campaign themes that an elementary class would automatically be split up or staffed extra. And if it hit twenty-seven, that would just be an automatic. So that was about three percent of, of classrooms that were, at least on this, this sheet. I am also concerned that we, I'm wondering if we're, and I, I understand that there's difficulty finding people in the, maybe the solution is bilingual aides rather than the additional bilingual teachers to split classes because we, we don't have them, we can't get enough of them. Again, it seems to me, a, a class where many students are within their first few years of learning the English language to be much over twenty would be, that would certainly make, make me pretty nervous. That's a lot, that's a higher need situation. So for my part, I guess I'm saying I would be willing to invest more to have more automatic splits slash extra staffing when we get to a certain size.
I, I, do you mind if I come in? I appreciate that and I think that that shows a deep dedication to making sure that all needs of all students are met. And I also feel that there, there are times when there is an exception that might be preferred by principal, teacher, students, and, and parents that, that might involve something different. Like for instance, if we were in a school that physically did not have the space and we were looking at a split and there wasn't a classroom, it might be, and it was one over, there might be thought around, around doing something differently, doing something creative and having the students in the same class, whether it was having two teachers in the same classroom or splitting in that way. So I believe in, and I think when you see what we've added in the, the past few years, you'll see that there's, there is a deep dedication to adding when, when we, when there are the needs. I would be cautious in that sometimes if we have a black and white policy or guideline, it can- it can sometimes force our hand in a way that we might not want. And I'm not just talking administration, but there might be a chance where the parents, students, and teachers and principals might say, "This is not best for kids," but the policy or guideline might say, "You need to do it." And I also would say that, to a degree, and this is just my own experience as a teacher, to a degree, if a class size is too small, it can also feel uncomfortable. I always liked, when I was teaching English language learners, to have at least ten or fifteen kids in class. If it got below ten, there was just, it didn't, it didn't feel like there was that same synergy and level of collaboration, that sometimes it was a little bit more like teaching a small study group than it was teaching a class. And I'm not saying that I would always say, "Don't split if you have twenty-one," but sometimes to split from twenty-one to ten at a cost of eighty thousand dollars, and maybe that loss of synergy and community, we have to, we have to consider those factors. So, of course, it's the board prerogative to decide what our policies and procedures are, but when we can make the considerations, there are some other elements related to the research and some things that it's important to consider all those factors when deciding.
And that would necessarily exclude in a, in a policy change, again, that it could be, depending on circumstances, I guess specifically, I'm thinking about the building that's full and you don't have a classroom for two. I think that could include another, you know, another teacher, and maybe in some circumstances, a para as an option, something, something that you're already doing. But like, for example, okay, a regular, I would, I think I could pretty confidently say that if we were in, if we were in September, and somehow an elementary school had, an elementary class had thirty-one kids, that there is no solution other than adding an additional person that would be okay. And yet, there's no, even, even on the extremes, there's no, there's no formal rule.
How often are teachers actually consulted with any of these guidelines or policies or practices?
That's a great question, Rhonda. We spent some time at Tink Elementary this past spring, both John Magus, myself, and Nancy Chartier, also Claudia Orr. And there were lots of questions around class size. I gave them a three-year comparison on what their actual numbers were over time. And it was really a positive experience, both for us at central office and for the teachers, to really be engaged in getting input. I would agree with what John said, that the teachers really talked about when they have nine or ten kids in the classroom, some children are ill for the day, other children are pulled out for special services, for interventions, that it doesn't feel like it's a community. They did share with us, especially in our achievement gap reduction schools, many of the teachers and principals talk about the social-emotional learning, and that when you have twenty-seven, twenty-eight bodies in a classroom, that it's, it's very challenging due to some of the complexities that they live with on a daily basis in their own home life. So it is something, that is why we set in our achievement gap reduction, which also are trauma-sensitive schools, we set those sizes lower for staffing ratios than the non-achievement gap reduction.
Okay, so at Tink, this conversation happened, how many other schools have you had that type of conversation with, with teachers being at the table with us?
My own personal experience has been that the building leadership team, or the leadership team, some schools call them just leadership teams, that that conversation, and then that according of information, the communication, going from teachers to the leadership team to the principal to us, that happens frequently.
Wait, can you go down that line again?
Yep.
Teacher.
So classroom teacher, and then every school has what's called a building or a school leadership team. Sometimes in some of our schools, you'll hear them just referred to as instructional leadership teams or leadership teams. They are the group that really works with the principal. They're collecting information at the elementary level, at grade level, at the secondary.
Mostly teachers and other certificated positions, not administrators.
Right. They bring that information to a, some schools meet monthly, other schools meet every other week, so they meet twice a month. And they're really addressing class size. An example I can give you is at Aldo Leopold, Trina, I worked with her over the summer, and her class sizes were going up. She met with her leadership team, they went and talked with teachers, they came back, and as a team, they made that decision. Now, with that said, absolutely, can we do a better job of making sure that we formally are getting that input? I think what happens is that it's all based on specific needs and experiences during certain school years, where we hear teachers coming to the table and advocating. We've received emails in the past from teachers who have stated that they know that the principal is coming to central office and meeting with us as executive directors, or with John Magus, with teaching and learning, to help support hearing their voice around class size.
Because I, I'm just saying this because, and I have brought this up a lot since I've been on the board, I have heard from a lot of teachers personally, does every single school have this leadership team available for class size discussions?
I can't tell you that the class size discussion is on every school leadership team's agenda. It's not a specific agenda item. It depends upon the variables that are impacting class size, and it is a problem-solution-oriented committee, that anyone can bring that to the committee. So it may be that we need to encourage principals to have more of those conversations to get teacher voice.
Just as a sign, though, it's interesting, because we, we meet as a team also to look at class sizes, and Judy, and Andrea, and Ann talk a lot to us and Terry about hotspots. So just, we were out at Weeklyak and had a conversation directly with the teacher. I knew where the hotspot was, went in and talked to her and said, you know, "You're right there." And I, and I said to her, just straight out, "If you change your mind, this is a, it's a real pivotal time. If you, if you're not comfortable, we will certainly look at this." And she, it's like, "No, no, I'll leave it at is, as is." On the other hand, we were in another school, and I had a teacher reach out and say, "This isn't working." And we looked, and it, and there's a teacher being hired. So I think that the goal, I would offer that people probably are advocating a fair amount, I would think. I don't, I don't feel like people wouldn't tell you. The concern, and sometimes because we monitor and know where the hotspots, I think, John, you went out to Red Smith to look?
Sure. Spent time with, in three classrooms and met with the team and principal.
And started watching, because wanting to make sure we have the right resources, so, I mean, it's not perfect.
Also, conversation with the association as well, with the teachers' association. They listen to their, their membership and come, and sometimes we've had conversations around particular hotspot areas, and how we can then correct and find resources for those hotspot areas. So really, there are, we're, there, we're always really on the, at least, we try to be on the same team. We're looking at trying to keep class sizes as low as possible. There is the need to be visibly responsible, too, so that's the impact that hits us. But we would love to keep class sizes as low as possible. But there's the mechanism that we use in trying to keep class size low, there's the advocacy from principals via the teachers that they talk to, and then the third piece being the association, and what they do as far as advocating for various positions. So those three mechanisms are an area that we look at. If we take a look, though, because I think that you're raising some really important questions, and I'll go back to the PowerPoint, nope, sorry, this mouse is being pretty finicky. So as I said, multiple considerations, and we've talked quite a bit now, to a degree, about the increasing and individualized needs of the schools and students, our policies and procedures, and then taking a look at what some of the current research says. Looking at some of the meta-analyses of class size, it does have impact. There are impacts from class size. The meta-analyses that have looked at this have seen that there's a small class size, the reviews on small class size have indicated a positive relationship between small class sizes and student achievement, but the meta-analyses have found that the, the impact is relatively low. That doesn't mean that that's the only thing we look at. Like I said, there are multiple other factors, but there is substantial research that says that the impact of decrease in class size doesn't necessarily get the biggest bang for the buck. There's also research by Alan Oden out of the University of Wisconsin-Madison, that looks at what type of position has the most significant impact. Sometimes, just as an example, if there's a building that's struggling with behavior, it, the traditional thing might be to consider, "Let's add a dean of students to help process that behavior." But really, the payback for a dean of students add is not as impactful as a coach. So we might find somebody who is better able to coach staff and students on resilience and other factors for bringing behavior into line, and looking at tier-two, tier-three types of intervention. So we want to look at the impact of class size research as, in addition to the impact of other research possibilities.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
There's a lot of research out that says that smaller class sizes help kids in trauma. There's a lot of research out there for that.
Agreed.
Agreed.
The, and especially the lower-grade levels. So really, there are, what the, the study, this is a study from the Journal of Research on Educational Effectiveness, and it's a recent article from 2016. I would, I would cite the authors, but as you can see from the last name of one of the authors, it's quite, quite long. But the, basically, the effects are consistent in kindergarten through third grade. They decrease to a degree from fourth through eighth grade, and are nonexistent in ninth through twelfth grade. That surprised me, and I'm not saying that that's something, there has to be an effect. If you, if you have a science class in a high school with fifty students, the learning is going to be different than if you have a science class with twenty-three students. But what this does show is that the impact is greater with the younger students. And what else it showed, and Rhonda, to your point, is communities that are impacted by poverty, and who have a more diverse student population with culturally and linguistically different needs, the impact of smaller class size is greater in those communities than in more homogeneous student populations. So those are things that we have to consider here in Green Bay. I don't know.
Going off what Rhonda was saying there, I think there's definitely, even, even as, and we can tell from the research that other things besides class size are more impactful, especially as you go up in age, student achievement is certainly, is certainly why we're here, but there's other benefits of lower class size, even if student achievement might be level if classes are bigger. There's still certainly parent access to teachers, there's staff, there's staff morale, there's, you know, people have, people looking at career options, look at, you know, look at workload, workload level, and for the, in a competitive market, if I know that, if I know that I'm applying in a district that will never allow my elementary class to break twenty, to hit twenty-seven, that might be a very strong selling point, even again, if that rule by itself is not going to guarantee a student achievement impact. There's also, there's certainly some, you know, safety implications, just being able to watch a, watch a classroom closer. So I think, even where, you know, I think where this, where this research analysis probably leaves off is I think it's very thoroughly looked at studies of student achievement, but there's other, other valid reasons to have lower class sizes, too.
Christina.
I'm just to piggyback off what you're, what you said, Andrew. I think I would also like for us to address some of the issues that I see in the policy about some vagueness in the electives, and some of the extracurricular courses, physical education, health, you saw those numbers sort of jumping up there. And to go back to what you were saying, Andrew, I think, safety and accessibility, and I was a PE teacher, I had a class of forty kids, because it became, it became a dumping ground, right? The kids came into my class so that they could have smaller class sizes. And I just want to go on record and say, I think that needs to be a priority as part of this conversation, because I think we're all thinking classroom teachers, but this is really all learning in the building, and it needs to really be about the whole child and their whole learning experience.
Valid points.
Hey Christina, just picking on you as a, as a fired teacher, did you sometimes want a situation for certain activities where maybe you would desire to have slightly higher than the, not forty, but slightly higher than the average, or not really?
No.
No?
The best practice in urban districts right now is, in their policy, is to call out specific, the same numbers as a classroom teacher for physical education.
Just a rare example that I can think of, when I've been asked, choir teacher, for example, wanting a higher number of students in class because they're looking for more vocal range within their choir. I haven't had a lot of teachers beg for really high class numbers. I would say that in almost every case, people would prefer a lower class size, and we would, too. And I think that we have to consider, what is the right balance of input with resources, with what is, what is the output as far as, as you mentioned, Andrew, not just student achievement, but some of those other, other variables as well, as far as community, engagement, safety, thriving workforce, and things of that nature. The, the other factor, though, is the impact of the cost if we were to significantly lower class size. It would be, I mean, if you're looking at what would make a sizable effect, having one or two students decreased from, from a class doesn't really change the way that the class is taught. If it, if it gets up to a point where there isn't room in class, yes, of course. But the difference between teaching twenty-five students and twenty-six students, there, there isn't usually a significantly different way of teaching, or something that occurs as far as a black or white, white switch. If we were looking at reducing class sizes of, say, five students per class, that would be an impact of tens of millions of dollars, and I'm not saying that that wouldn't be what we'd want to do, but we would have to figure out what would we do to find tens of millions of dollars? It would go far beyond, you know, I know there's conversation sometimes around reduction of staff or reduction of administration. It would take far more than reducing all administration to impact all class sizes by five students or more. So the impact of, I think that when we have a limit, and when we're considering the multiple variables within, we have to consider what would the cost be if we were going to have a significant shift? And then, as, as the two of you brought up, Rhonda and Christina, the impact is bigger for the lower-grade levels, and for poverty, and for culturally and linguistically different student populations. So are we going to just have a flat number? Or do we want to have some degree of control where we can give a little more resource where there might be greater need?
Can I just, I don't know if you covered this, I was in the bathroom. Do you believe, do you believe that lowering class sizes, making maybe some hard caps, may reduce our suspension rates?
It's an excellent question. I think that it could. I think that you would have to consider what are the, the effects that would need to be in place to ensure that happening? Just as a, for instance, if we had to decrease counselor time, or social worker time, or other mental health resources that are in place, or perhaps behavioral coaching, that could potentially have a negative effect. But for the most part, sure, lower class sizes, it's, you can build better community, and you can have a closer relationship with your students, and those are important items, or important factors. So it does have an impact on behavior, but there are other things that... but there are other things that have impact, too. So we have to consider in the scope of things that we are allocating resources on, what will give us the greatest impact? And if you have us move to the next slide, there are some other factors that I know the Hattie research isn't looked to as frequently all the time by everyone, but the Hattie research, this was shared with the board previously, this was the 2009 to 2015 studies on effect size. There have been effect sizes updated for 2018. This link goes to the old study that it shares the information that we shared previously, but the current 2018 information is very similar as far as what are some of the things that have significant impact. So if we looked at, if we look at effect size, and that is the effect on something on student achievement, one thing that I noticed is we missed a decimal point in our PowerPoint we shared publicly. So it should be negative point four-two as opposed to negative forty-two. That would be, negative forty-two would be a very different piece to consider. But if we look at what has the greatest impact on student achievement, there are things that do have greater significance statistically if we look at some of the multitude of research that's out there. Growth mindset is, has the biggest impact on students. That's what was found. And that really is, what is somebody's, what is a teacher and a system's response to whether or not they believe students can learn? Do you truly believe all students can learn, and are we going to do everything possible to make sure that they do? That had the biggest impact. If we look at the next effect size, it was collective teacher efficacy and thinking about opportunities for collaboration. I believe that when we have, that our teachers are extremely knowledgeable, and if we have opportunities for them to work collectively to solve problems, that we can have opportunity for progress. So that number there, collective teacher efficacy, thinking about collaboration, you could take away teacher planning time that they had together and reduce class size. But there's research to show that that time for collaboration does have impact. Also, multi-level systems to support, looking at which kids are not meeting standard with the universal instruction, making sure that there are interventions for those students, that has a significantly large impact as well. So they're all important, but there are some things that do have greater impact. However, sorry, let me just say one more. If you have lower class size, you might have time to have a relationship with a student where you can have deeper impact with growth mindset. If you have fewer students, you might have more opportunity to collaborate. But those are all factors that are multiple variables that we have to consider at the same time. Christina, I'm sorry.
I'm not familiar with this reference, but in terms of the influence of achievement, were these teacher-based, I mean, was he looking at teacher-based influencers, or were there other pieces like hunger, or like, did he look at the whole child, or?
It was whole-child based. In fact, the negative forty-two, the greatest negative impact on student achievement was depression. So when, I've heard strong advocacy from many board members around mental health supports, the, there are things we can do to make things better, but there are also some things that are having negative effect that we need to address, the root cause pieces there, and depression was one of the greatest impacts there. Andrea, if there's something that you would like to add as well?
No, I think you've done a nice job, John. I think Hattie's research has evolved over time. Two thousand and nine, he started, and it was a meta-analysis. It has gone up to now two thousand and eighteen. And if you actually click on the slide prior, John, if you move, go back one slide. The research that we were quoting, we quoted in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, when we moved from Sage to achievement gap reduction. If you click on that effect size, on, I think it's slide nine, that actually is going to link you to the two thousand and eighteen. So this is the new one, the latest one that he's done. What I can tell you is that the majority of, he has added some of the different variables or the influences on student achievement, but what I can tell you is that the majority of them, over the last nine years and within the four studies that he has done, and he's done over fourteen hundred, he's looked at fourteen hundred different studies, you can see that some of those top indicators have remained the same. Teacher efficacy, collaboration, also that growth mindset, so teachers' feelings estimate predicting how well students will do have remained.
And then, as the effect size gets smaller, you also go into, what are the, in red, are the things that have negative impact on student learning?
His new research goes all the way to a negative point ninety. So if you look at the research that we quoted, you'll see that it's from two thousand and fifteen. And it was actually a meta-analysis that he did with higher, with secondary, higher ed, and looking at what effects are the success of students at higher ed.
Dr. Stramp shared a great number of research articles, probably thirty or more articles with me, and I was able to skim through some of them. And the article I shared prior to that was one of the ones that was another meta-analysis similar to Hattie's that shared similar research, similar findings. But again, the effects were greatest in the lower grade levels and the students that were in poverty.
There's actually within, and of course, I got there once yesterday, but I can't get there again. But there is, if you click that effect sizes, and I can't remember what I eventually clicked, but I eventually got to the ability to print this, which is a really nice, quick visual summary. It has a color, it's color-coded, and I'll play with it, and if I can come up with.
I think it's a table. Do you want to come up to?
Yeah, but I had to work to get it to the point where it was printable, because at first it took me to the, you know, an article that you can't have unless you have access to academic articles and things like that. So anyway, try to figure out, pardon?
So if you find it, send it out over.
I will, I'll see if I can.
Can Sandy make copies?
Yeah, Sandy could just make copies, except I just wrote on it, but anyway.
Legibly?
I just circled something, so it's okay.
That'll work.
But anyway, I'll figure out a way to get it to everybody. Either Sandy can make copies, or I'll figure this out. Drive me crazy.
So, and we still have more to share. Our current reality, taking a look at our current reality, our student needs continue to grow, and in two thousand and seventeen, we had a referendum that graciously the community supported in allowing us to not make the cuts that would have been in place. We still cut multiple millions of dollars to make sure that we had our budget in place, but it saved, as Lori said, approximately a hundred and fifty positions that would have been supportive of students. We have had relatively flat student enrollment. So the enrollment has been relatively flat. It's not declining greatly. There's a small decline. Sounds like quite a storm outside.
I was going to say.
Oh, is that what we're, green, green?
We've also reallocated resources to meet the growing needs of students. So take a look at this. This slide is pretty interesting. If I don't skip it, it is more interesting. This mouse is not. So here we go. Our student population has hovered basically above twenty-one thousand five hundred, between twenty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-nine forty-six. This estimated number is, we're estimated to remain flat. So even though the number is exactly equal, it's because there's an estimate of a flat Third Friday count. This number is generated from our Third Friday count, because that's one of the main numbers we use once kids are in place and they're likely to stay for a longer period of time. If we look at how many total educator FTE we had in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen, you can see that we have added significantly each year. Last year, as a, for instance, we added twenty-nine point four-eight FTE of educators. Now, FTE of educator, there's, it's a broader definition. It might include counselors, it might include librarians. Primarily, they're teaching positions. They're not administrative positions. Primarily, they are, they are teaching positions and other supports that are directly supporting our students.
And our enrollment declined three hundred students.
Yes. So, we dropped by three hundred students, yet we added thirty point five teachers. What does that mean financially to add that? It means that we have added, sorry, this little thing, nearly two million dollars last year. Nearly two million dollars in additional salaries and benefits to ensure that the student needs were met. So we're looking at this year having flat enrollment again, and we added another twenty-six point two-six FTE of position. So that was one point seven million dollars, one point eight million dollars, almost. So in the past two years, we've added about four million dollars in FTE despite the student population decreasing. So we have lowered class size, and we have focused on increasing the ratio of adult-serving students in the past few years, and that's something that has been strongly advocated for. It's challenging, though, to find the resources to do that.
And, John, this does not include any of your paraeducators or your support staff?
Exactly. So paraprofessionals, clerical, monitors, lunchroom supervisors, there have been increases in those areas as well, but those are not reflected in this. This includes certificated professional educators, which would, there's a definition in the fine print there, including school psychologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, all those different, when you think about coaches, not talking about athletic coaches, but thinking about literacy coaches and instructional coaches.
I'm going to address this to Andrea because she's been with the district a bit longer than you guys. So as you watch this new, these influxes of new teachers, do you sense, or can you gauge, what is your perception as far as an alleviation of stressors on our teachers as far as having more teachers available?
Right. This is what I know that I have seen as, what has evolved over the last ten to fifteen years. More probably in the last five years. I see a lot of mentorship going on at central office. Terry Williams and Ann Barsh work with all of the new educators. In addition to that, and probably most critically, I see at a school level, principals understanding how important it is for teachers who are new to the profession, new to the school, to have additional support from the leadership team at the elementary level, and I know at secondary duty also, I have seen that. There's a lot of conversations about the job-embedded training that is happening, and a lot of our principals are meeting with the new educators in their schools. They all have a mentor, both a district-wide mentor, and then each principal mentors them with a colleague, right? It's usually a grade-level colleague. If it's a one-track school, one up or down.
I'm mostly talking about just in the last couple of years, with these numbers we're looking at right here, these, you know, this new additional, a couple of years of adding more teachers, maybe it's not enough time has gone by to actually feel the full impact of that. And maybe I'm asking you the impossible, but I'm just wondering if this huge investment is paying off as far as reducing stress on our teachers?
So I believe that some of that FTE has been to keep class sizes low. I'll give you a very quick example. Nicolay School, we hired two teachers a year ago at the start of the school year. We, they were in their fourth and fifth grade. We committed two years because we asked them to do something unique. Instead, they had brand-new teachers in those classrooms. Instead of putting thirteen and fourteen children in two classrooms, we asked them to do something to problem-solve with their leadership team. Matt Heller and I went in, we worked with the leadership team. We pulled a teacher who, Lori McCarthy, has been there for many, many years, phenomenal with classroom management. She coached the brand-new teachers for half a day. She, right in the classroom, working with those brand-new teachers, and then she separated some of the kids out for some instruction. In addition to that, Kelly Dido was the fourth-grade teacher, where also they had twenty-seven. So she had a three-sixteen license. So she went in and she taught literacy to groups of students because she was licensed to be able to do that. So instead of having thirteen and fourteen in a classroom, they really problem-solved around how do they best utilize the resources that they have to support those brand-new teachers. And they're doing it again this year and doing a fabulous job.
I think another thing to realize, and John, the podium is between us, but I'm thinking it's probably going through your mind, is sometimes we refer to it as the gift that keeps giving, and we mean that with love. But when we add two million dollars in staffing and benefits last year, it's not like that goes away. We're investing that again this year. So as, if I'm hired as a new person and I'm continuing the next year, that two million dollars would also be reflected to add to the one point eight million dollars. So really, this year, the investment is the two million again, because its new salaries continuing and benefits continuing, and another one point eight million dollars added to that. We do, we will reach a nexus and a point at which it won't be sustainable, where we will have to look at either other significant changes in structure, supports, things of that nature, as far as number of schools, benefits, structure of the organization, things of that nature, that would have to significantly shift, or approach the community with operational referendum. Things of that nature are what would impact that. We can't add two million dollars each year, because it comes, the two million dollars is four million, and if we add two million again next year, we're really investing six million additional. It's something that adds up and would not be sustainable over time.
Michelle.
I think Laura will speak to this in her report, and there is some acknowledgement from the state level, really looking at, there's a reason we're adding more. It's because our needs continue to grow, and the recognition of the resource, what may serve one district very well may not serve another well. And I keep going back to the fact that we serve more than forty-five hundred students whose first language is not English, and that is a larger number than ninety percent of the school districts in the state. And the other piece that factors in here is special education, and each student is deserving of the resources and supports they need. But when the reimbursement rate is so low, it continues to create a challenge, and really to balance all of the needs is difficult. The other piece I would offer is that twenty-nine point four-eight seems like a lot, but we have how many schools? You know, it's, and that's what, approximately two million dollars for thirty staff. So that's the other piece. Sometimes the scale of this district may not always be as well-known in our community. What one small community serving significantly fewer students can do has, it does not have the effect size, so to speak. And so then you hear our executive directors do very well to try to creatively problem-solve with staff and really come up with the best that we can with what we have. But I still am pushing on a lot more resource from the state to sustain where we want to go.
I figured out how to get that chart. It's very easy, actually. If you go to that slide nine or ten, the link is on both of them, and click that, and then go all the way to the bottom of that long list where it's a horizontal bar chart, it says source, and then there's, on the far right of that, it says PDF. And if you just click that, it'll, and then you can download and print it, print off your computer. It's right before the comments at the bottom of that.
Thank you.
So as far as next steps, consideration of possible changes to policy and procedure, that's one thing that we will have to do, at least, even if just to, as I said, change the Sage wording to achievement gap reduction, but I think it's always good to periodically review policy and procedure and see where the changes can improve the system. We also want to continue improvement- We also want to continue improvement to the staffing allocation process. Each year, we work to improve that process, work to be more responsive to needs and gather information sooner, and we, we always work to, to improve that, as well as the improvement to the registration processes. We mentioned earlier that the more timely information we have, the more responsive to, to individual classroom needs we can be. So, that is something that, that we will be considering as well. And I was seeking a little information on the class size at Webster, but that hasn't been obtained yet. If, if I can get that class size to you, I will do that as well and follow up. We thank you for your time, and if there's anything else?
Do you have questions, Rhonda?
So, are we, everyone, are we thinking of, are we updating policy? Are we making any decisions on this? Are we doing anything with this?
You're working currently on, on the policies? Is that what I heard you say?
We have a, we have a cycle in place for looking at policies.
Okay.
And yes, that John and Ann and Terry and Judy and I talked a couple of weeks ago about we need to get class size on that cycle.
Yeah, I don't know where Melissa is and her seat. She's got it all done though, so. But yeah, that would be. Yeah, and I guess in response to Andrew's comments about hard and fast rules in policy, I know that that's frowned upon. They have black and white policies. And I guess I'm, I'm not as interested in those hard and fast numbers when I hear stories like you just described at Nicolay, where had we had a hard, fast policy, there may have been no option but to have two teachers and split and things like that. Whereas it sounds like they have a situation that, that has been very, very good for their new teachers and also for their students because it's given them some opportunity to have, you know, the reading instruction from a, from that teacher within three sixteen and, and things like that. So, I'm, I'm personally not, I mean, I, I, I don't want to get us so tight that we can't have creative solutions like that that are actually going to serve students better than just lowering the class size and assuming that, that, you know, that that'll make things better. When you look at all the factors that weigh into what improves student achievement. So, that's where I, that's where I sit on the, on the policy piece of it.
I didn't, I didn't say that a hard limit, in my opinion, would be a limit where staff must be added. It wouldn't, I think it would likely, but not necessarily be a class-size split. And I think there, I would argue that there's probably, there's probably some level at which there'd be unanimous agreement on the board that there is a level that's not okay without adding a teacher. I would, I would think probably no one here is okay with ever reaching thirty in an elementary without adding staff. Maybe you can't split in half because the building doesn't have a classroom or something like that. I don't like kids after move schools. But I guess I think, I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see something maybe January, February in, in time for, in time for staffing possibly. Take a look at.
Melissa, do you have those three staff sizes, the, well, the policy and the two rules on rotation that, that coming up? Or have you not?
There have been no prior updates from legislators, so they were not.
Okay. So, they're, they're not currently on the schedule, so we can put them on the schedule if we want. Okay.
And as a positive final note, Tina actually had responded, but it was forty-seven minutes ago, which was about twenty emails down as far as new emails, and we have two sections at Webster, and the two sections at third grade are at twenty-five right now. So, that, that's good news.
Each.
Each. Twenty-five each. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That completes our report.
Great. Thanks, Laura. Next is superintendent's update. I'll turn that over to Dr. Leganfeld.
Sure. I have a number of things on there. I want to begin with the October calendar. On October first, we're actually having our work session beginning at five-thirty here in the boardroom. Immediately following is the organizational support work meeting. And then on October eleventh, we have our intercity student council meeting with the board at seven AM here in the boardroom. October fifteenth is our special board meeting and deliberation and approval of the budget, beginning at four o'clock. Regular board meeting at five-thirty on October fifteenth. Then we have the public engagement session regarding the two thousand and eighteen-nineteen budget at six PM. And I know that's been posted online as well, the budget hearings. And then October twenty-sixth is a fall recess. The schools are closed. October twenty-ninth is a public hearing and special board meetings to adopt the two thousand eighteen-nineteen district budget, beginning at six PM as well. So, that is the October calendar. And again, the engagement sessions around the budget have been posted online, and we will be providing childcare if anyone's interested, but we ask that they call for reservation, and that's on, on the page, the public engagement session. That we'll have that available as well. Please call so that we make sure we have the right resources to support children. The second thing is I would like to set up a time to talk with the board, and our team would, around the district's success plans. Just as each school has a success plan, so does the district. And you probably are very familiar, for example, with the, the plans around mathematics. The board has heard a fair amount, I would say, about the work that's being done, not only with advantage, math recovery, but with, and it's just my brain is tired. Bridges. And which I keep thinking building block when I think of bridges. But I think that the other area that we really would like to have a deeper discussion around is what's going on in literacy. I know that we all are very concerned. I know that we're, we've looked at our data these last several years and recognize that gap in phonemic awareness, and have been, and are well-positioned with our 4K this year to really start to move that with the expectation that by the end of first grade and the end of kindergarten, we have a proficiency level. And I think that the other conversation that we continue to have that is an important conversation, and I know, Dr. Warren, you've got, you've been appointed to the Legislative Committee on Dyslexia, but as I look out to the legislation around that, a potential legislation, really looking at what is the impact and how do we identify students, not only in areas of phonemic awareness, but even a deeper dive in dyslexia. I think that's a real important conversation when we really dive deeply into our literacy as well. So, I'm looking forward to that conversation, and it will be really that elementary and secondary dives. And so, we'll need to set up a date, and I know we have those hearings too. And we're thinking probably anywhere in October and November, if at all possible.
How early?
Well.
In, in October?
It.
Because I'm looking at, oh, wait a minute. Oh, no, we don't have a meeting on October eighth because it's the first, is our first work session. So, I'm looking at the eighth, which is a Monday that has no meeting on it.
And I'm not, I.
And I don't know if that's, that's pretty quick.
I'm looking at the team. I think it's pretty quick.
Okay.
I, we, we want to make sure that we have the metrics because we know that, that the state assessment is one way we measure, but we want to identify and really talk deeply about our leading indicators as well, and what's telling us to move in certain areas.
Is the twenty-second?
The twenty-second would be probably amenable or even into.
I'm not here. I'm not here.
About November, November, like, twelfth, would that work?
It works for me.
If we go to Mondays.
I'm not going to be here.
You're not going to be here?
I'm going to be in San Diego.
Is that the whole week, Christina?
Let me look.
So, it doesn't have to be on a Monday, right?
It doesn't, no. That's, that's for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to be gone that the twelfth or the sixteenth that week.
I mean, we could look at, yeah, we have a, we have a board meeting on the fifth, but we could potentially look at the Wednesday. The Thursday, yeah, the seventh or eighth, if that works. Seventh works better for me.
And what time is this?
Seventh is fine.
Seventh works.
Seventh works.
Does that work for you, Andrew?
I should be able to.
Does five work?
Five?
The seventh.
Does that work for you?
I'll make it work.
So, five on November seventh, five o'clock.
Okay. Okay. Got that. Thank you.
And that's probably a.
Two.
Two to three, I would guess, hours?
Yeah, we just had two on.
Right. Oh, I know. We, yeah. Are we just doing reading? Are we doing math and reading?
We're doing the full scope of, of elementary, secondary.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, I would say probably at least three hours by the time. We, we tend to ask a lot of questions, board members do, so. Which is good.
Which is, right. I think it's, I think it's important that everyone have a shared understanding of all the work that's going on and then be able to weigh in and provide voice as we move forward, obviously, because the investments that are being made. Want to make sure we have results, so. Okay? Then the next item I have on, on my agenda is around school start time, and it's, it's an agenda item that I know that, Rhonda, you had asked to put on the agenda, and I know that it has been a discussion, and I know we had a white paper earlier from Mr. Becker. So, to really start to provide that conversation, and I know the board wanted to start that tonight, but there's, you know, when I, I did provide a couple of links in the update, beginning with Carla Wallstrom's research out of Cary and Applied, the Center for Applied Research from the University of Minnesota. And she, I recall that many years ago when she started that conversation, and it's, it's been a journey. Obviously, there's a lot of research behind this endeavor, and a lot of different districts looking at this after so many years to really determine what to do for next steps around the benefits. And so, did a lot of reading myself in this area. And I, and the first, what, what I, my takeaway from a couple of places is, first of all, the, the research is very, very strong in support of why you would do this, that communities who have grappled with it, the, the recognition that we're, there are a lot of considerations, and it's not quick. It's not quick to do this because, and I, we even think of our own families. We serve approximately sixteen thousand families, and then with those families, you can have multiple households, and that's just the complexities that we have. And I'm looking out at one of our teachers and wanting to make sure that we, you know, we would need those conversations with the staff. And it's, 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 it certainly isn't something that isn't doable. The state of California, interestingly enough, is, has legislation that they're waiting to see if the governor will sign that will require that transformation as well and that change. But you look at the Center for Disease Control, and you look at the pediatrics, the pediatricians behind it and all the research. It's a pretty strong, strong body of research around it. And Carla Wallstrom finished her report, and she said, you know, it really boils down to if we have the will and we can, then we can find the way. So, I put that out for the board, and next steps would be wherever we, after your conversation here.
Can I actually, can I just mention that NOAA actually wrote a paper regarding changing start times? And there has been a lot of conversation at the intra-city student council meetings that I've attended in the last year about changing that. I thought about this this morning. I got up, my daughter has to get up at six-thirty, gets to school by seven fifteen, seven twenty, has an advanced math class by seven thirty-five. And I look at her, she's walking around with a bagel in her mouth, she's, her eyes are closed, she's trying to do, get dressed. I just think about, I mean, I, I honestly look at it, and I just think this is ridiculous. How can she function at seven thirty-five when she's half asleep at seven oh five? And let alone get there, get ready, get into class, focus on advanced math curriculum, and do well, and feel good? I mean, she's crabby, she's, you know, especially, and I think when we think about middle school students who have a lot of other things going on in general. But I don't know how many adults feel ready to go and could do an advanced math class at seven thirty in the morning, let alone a middle schooler who's still growing emotionally, physically, all of the things that, when you think about the whole student. You know, middle school, high school, I think, is what I think about when I think about adjusting start times. And I will say, I had, I counted fifty-seven messages, emails, or phone calls since I posted this on my school board Facebook page, and I thought that was interesting.
It's weather.
Weather alert.
It's weather.
Keep going.
No, I.
It might not even be us.
I think I'm done. We'd get it here, right?
It's a wide range.
Okay. Anyway, I just, my thoughts, and it was this morning I thought about it because she looked like.
How many did you say? Fifty-seven?
I had fifty-seven emails, phone calls, private messages, comments on my page. It was, it was overwhelming. I feel like that's what I've been doing for the last week is just responding to people. And it was, I think, maybe two of them said no. The rest were please, please, please do this for so many reasons. We have so many parents that, you know, they, they don't get off of work at two-thirty or three. They work till four-thirty, five-thirty. I mean, it is, for me personally, I have to leave my job, and because she doesn't qualify for transportation, drive across town, pick her up, bring her home, go back to work. I think, I just think it would be an interesting thing to start looking at.
I think it's definitely worth looking at for exactly what you said and what Dr. Leganfeld said. I mean, the research is there, and we have talked about it. It has cycled through conversations. I mean, I remember having a conversation with David Zadnik about this specifically, and, and what it would take to, to get this to happen. It's a huge undertaking because it's, it actually, unless we buy enough buses to bus everybody at the same time, we have to switch elementary and, and high school times. So, then that involves families of elementary students who now all of a sudden have to shift, and their kids are getting done with school, and they're not done with work. It affects our kids missing school unless the whole conference agrees to, to shift. When you have games and matches and what time those are, occur after school, it affects our teachers because they sign up for a, you know, they have their, their work schedule, and they have their children to pick up and all of that kind of thing, and so that, it affects them. And then again, it affects our, our families in terms of it shifts their childcare, and then it affects our childcare, daycare businesses because they're all getting shifted. So, it is, and then, and it affects the people that hire our kids after school. So, our employers that are hiring high school kids, it affects them. So, I look at this as, as it can't be about us just deciding to do this because it's going to require a lot of people helping us see, you know, how we can make this so that it's, so that it doesn't, so that it's doable for everybody involved. And so, I don't think, see it as a short process to get there, but, but I do think it's worth, it's worth starting that process. So, that's where I am. Ed?
Okay, yeah, and, and we have, since I've been on the board, not that long, obviously, but we have addressed it in the past and always found reasons why it couldn't work, and, you know, it's frustrating. I agree, it's not something you can do overnight because there are a lot of factors that, that enter into it. But if we go back to the statement that Christina read at the beginning of the meeting, what is our purpose?
I agree.
And the question that Rhonda asked before. And the question that Rhonda asked before that was prefaced with, do you believe, well, do we believe that an earlier start time, or later start time, I'm sorry, a later start time would improve student learning? And if the answer is yes, then we've got to figure out how to make it happen.
The answer is yes.
And, you know, granted, there are a lot of factors that are, are involved that have to be addressed, but really, that's the bottom line and it is a big thing and, you know, my suggestion was we look at much as we have with the boundary, you know, having a, a task force made up of board and community members and, and staff and figure it out. But, you know, but let's quit talking about it and, you know, maybe if we start with an affirmative statement from the board that yes and do, we do believe this research. We do believe our own eyes, our own experiences with our kids and ourselves, then how do we not do it?
Well, there's also something that's really important to note and to point out as well. Twenty percent of our district, state district report card for the state is actually figuring in with attendance. And I can't imagine that we wouldn't actually improve the attendance situation in the district as well with having a later start and that couldn't potentially help our state report card. I mean, I can't imagine that wouldn't play a part in that.
Well, what I've looked at across the board, I mean, you're talking about physical health, mental health, cognitive development, and certainly attendance is, is aligned to all that too.
Because we know there are kids that just don't come in because they just can't make it in. I mean, this is, they're out there, it's happening. It's a fact and would they come in if the start time was bumped?
Jamie would like to say something.
Jamie?
So I'm a senior at Wats this year and I know I've been pushing this issue with ICSC since my freshman year. Just seeing what it does to students, I'm a full diploma student, so I usually have three to four hours of homework every night on top of board meetings sometimes, other things like that. And like all my friends, especially the ones in IB, we're all talking about how accustomed to coffee we've become in the last year because we're forcing ourselves to drink it so that we can make it to class and we can stay up to do our homework. And I don't think that's something that a high schooler should have to do.
No. No.
So, yes, there are a lot of logistical concerns to come along with this and I'm not saying I have a beautiful solution in ten pages because that's not, that's not how that works, it took me like a month to write this, it's going to take a lot longer to successfully implement a plan. However, though, I think there is somewhat of an idea behind adding periods to the high school and perhaps middle school days that can alleviate some of the problems that come with sports conflicts and such things as that. I, I mean, I think everyone here is in agreement, the research is in full support of it. Now it's just a matter of how do we do it? And how do we execute it correctly so that it actually works? And so I am excited to see how that progresses and I hope that the board does something with it and we can see that actual change in the district at some point.
Andrew, understand.
So, yeah, I can do, I can, I can even do better than a conversation with David Zadnik about this. I've had a, had a conversation with Superintendent Tom Joint about this while I was on intra-city student council about later start times. So I'm glad to see that there's some, seems like there might be some consensus here that maybe this is not, not the year that we would do it, obviously, we're in the middle of one and maybe it's not even the next academic year that it can happen, but I think to actually have some agreement that we'll, we'll do something and that we just won't stop when people say it's a problem for, a lot of times what I think has happened is once the complaints started coming in about sports, we, it's not that we quit talking about it because of sports, but that's kind of when it stopped being talked about was when people complained about sports. If the, if the percent, if the percentage of kids who are doing a sport, which is a minority of kids on any one given day, if those kids are missing thirty more minutes of school sometimes because everyone gets to start later, that's not very high on my list of, of concerns. It's, and I, I think that if one, one luxury that we have is being the largest district in the area is I, I don't think we have to worry too much provided that we do the right thing and give proper notice that I'm, I think we would find that childcare places before and after school programs, maybe more kids might need a before and maybe less need of an after, but things probably not, less of it, just maybe which, which ones get bigger, which ones get smaller. I think if we do our, our job right on it, there can be some coordination with agencies with adequate time to prepare. I also think there is definitely something to be said on the, on the high school level with the free access to city buses of having, adding some additional periods into the days so that if you are an early bird and choose to take a class that starts earlier, you could. And then if you were, we would offer the yellow buses on the, the standard schedule. I think there's some equity safeguards that would have to be there, but I think they're manageable. So if you want to put a singleton class in the, outside of the traditional schedule, but you could still have an earlier hour for people, you wouldn't put an IB class there either. I think there's a lot of things that could be done that not only help with getting people to be able to start later, but also possibly alleviating some space concerns where we have some space concerns too. So I, I am just very happy to see this on an agenda and glad that it looks like this will be the year, when I was, when I was talking with NOAA a few times about class size, I said, you know, before, before I'm done on the board this time, what, what I regret not doing in the past is I never insisted on an answer. And if, as a student, as a board member, whenever, I just, you know, if, if this is studied and the answer is this can't happen in Green Bay or it's not right for Green Bay, then just, just tell me no. Don't delay it and have something else come up and get in the way, just, just, if it has to be no, just tell me, but I don't think it's no.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I had an order here, I've already forgotten.
I just want to say something really quick, I just think an important first step is looking at comparable districts. I know this is happening across the country, we're not the only ones having this conversation. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, so some of my work with urban school districts around the country, this is something that I could bring up with them, but I would encourage coalition building and best practice sharing as we have this conversation.
Just as a, a follow-up, Appleton is looking. You know, I think for what, to Andrew's point, being larger, I mean, we could, you know, it would be great if the whole valley went. You know, I don't know if the whole valley's interested, but the research is so compelling that you start to really look at it. I think one of the concerns and, and I don't know where the appropriate timing of this is, but some schools have gone halfway. In other words, the research would tell you eight thirty, it says eight thirty, eight thirty, eight thirty, some will go to eight o'clock. And I was just even, Dr. Wall, um, Wallstrom's piece does say basically that, that if you go halfway, you get about, you get a modest benefit, but you don't get the full benefit.
The full benefit, right.
Where you look at the school districts that say, you know, every, every single course and all semesters and all grades saw improvement in student achievement. That's a lot in a certain school district that they, Jackson Hole, Wyoming is what they were citing. So I, I, I think that that's part of, part of the discussion. I think the big, the big, the big concern really comes to the littles, the little ones in the dark. I think that's probably the greatest concern that I kept seeing over and over, so.
Except in the winter, the little ones are going to be in the dark pretty much. And we do have a lot of before and after school programs, I think more than the last time we discussed this.
They would be part of that.
And would it behoove us to send out an, an interest survey to the other districts that we might want to?
Just our friends, yeah, the Brown.
Brown County.
Yeah, Brown County, I mean, just to see if there's more interest than us, I mean, we will do what we need to do, but.
I'll see all of the superintendents.
We probably cross over with daycare and employers.
And bus companies.
Bus companies.
Oh, yeah, we use the same ones.
So there's crossover in terms of the people that would be at their table are going to be the same people at our table.
Right. But even the, the worry that I have that keeps me up at night of putting students out on the roads on snow days in the dark is very, very problematic, knowing they're driving. So next steps, it sounds like people, and, and you talked about making a formal statement, I don't know how you want to do that. And to Mr. Dorf's point around the task force, that certainly would be something that, that we could help to start moving, again, it isn't going to be quick because there's other, other task force groups looking and thinking, facilities area, looking deeper in that, so. But I do think that it's, one, I was reading one school district that was really going after it and they said, well, for the first year we were the research arm and we got, you know, all the, all the neighboring and got everybody's data so that we were able to make decisions. One group from a board said, everything went really well, everybody was all in, everybody was supported till three months before the vote. So that can happen as well, but just, just need some direction from.
That points to the coalition.
The coalition building.
The importance of building coalitions early in the process. So, I mean, I guess, I think board members should be part of this committee, so I'll be looking for probably two that would be interested in attending the task force meetings on a regular basis. I think it's helpful to have the same, the same people do it, although we, no, I, yeah, I mean, when we leave it up to us just showing up, then we sometimes have meetings where nobody's there. So I think it's good to have somebody that's, that's at, that we should have a board member at all of the meetings, I, I don't know, what do you think, if it's better to have same, same people? I think that helps with coalition building, the community members are seeing the same board members consistently.
Would we be doing this next school year, the task force, it wouldn't be this year, would it be?
I think that, I think that there could be certainly a fair amount of preliminary work done just even looking more deeply at what's out there, you know, I mean.
I mean, we could just start as simple as
Research.
CISA roundtable model that we used for facilities and for safety and, and just start there and see what our community is thinking and, and getting, getting input that way.
Appleton's as well and.
And then, well, I, we could, yeah, see what.
Yeah, because I think they're ahead of us, actually. They started last year looking into it, so we could even look, what if we look at their framework and see where they're at and bring that back? But again, it, it would behoove us to really, I mean, and I liked the idea of doing a formal commitment because then it can't, I can't not. Does that, I mean, I think that's a smart thing to do. And then, then when we go out and have a, it's, you've got the charge basically for a group of people to start looking, I would assume that, you know, start the parent advisory that I have too, that, that would be a group I'd tap into and try to get their feedback and.
Your buy, the chamber partners and ed group.
Partners and ed group, I have a lot, we have a lot of groups, I don't have a lot of groups, we have a lot of groups and Christina has groups, other people have groups. It would be interesting to even start doing formal and informal to get people's feedback.
So I'd like to request an agenda item for the next meeting cycle, not that we wouldn't start working on it because there's, I think there's consensus to do it, but I'd like to officially make a motion directing the establishment of a school start time committee. I think it's maybe gray area whether we're, I mean, we are noticed for the topic, but we're not noticed for action on it, so just to keep it clean, we do it next cycle, but I'd like to request that as a action item.
Okay. Everybody's good with that?
Yes.
Did anybody say no, okay. So Sandy, you can put that on our agenda for us, thank you.
Then were there, were there any pieces of research you found valuable, because maybe we could just post a couple so that when people start thinking about it, I think, you know, Carla Wallstrom's is interesting to me because she was the first one out that I'm aware of in the country that started looking deeply at.
I have a few and I had a bunch that was sent to me and I have some that I found.
Yeah, and we can start archiving those as well, it'll be interesting to see where California goes with it.
When is that, what's the timeframe on that? Is that soon?
It's, it's, it's sitting on the governor's desk, is what I'm told, so.
So the work's been done?
Yeah, the legislature's passed it.
So I'm gonna, when I'm in LA in October, we'll have thirty-two districts there and LA will be there as well as other, like Chicago, Miami, and attendance is a half-day session. And I will bring it up to the group and so I will be able to report back by the end of October what they have and they would, I'm sure they'd be excited to share.
Good.
That's great, that's wonderful. Okay, we have a good start. The other thing, somebody just, somebody said, well, we could always extend the school year too. I thought that was interesting, I'm not sure that's been part of the point. I don't, that's only, you just said shorter days and you don't have to worry about any of the courses or the different opportunities going away for kids having to leave early, whatever, so. And so we're good to go?
We are.
Okay, I'm gonna finish with a success story. Today was a groundbreaking for the STEM Innovation Center at the university, it's part of collective efforts with the Einstein Project and of course the county and, and university all coming together. And what's interesting about it is it's, it's timely in that the whole notion around STEM and innovation is very important to us and we have our, our celebration of the school, Wequiahc Elementary School's Children's Center for Environmental Science to celebrate their official grand opening here as well, so it's, and that's tomorrow. So really thinking about that whole science, technology, engineering, and math, it just really fits beautifully together and what the intent with, with the innovation center is that you would have young students in maker spaces as well as your engineers right next to it, so that they see that this pathway is for all students young and, and as they come through to ensure and inspire that innovation, collaboration, project-based learning, so. It's kind of exciting for our community and it's really exciting for us to have a school opening and that environmental science focus at elementary. Concludes my part.
Okay, thank you. Do we want to take a break? Yes, okay, let's come back at eight.
It would start to grow, that would.
All right, we'll call the meeting back to order and next on our agenda is the legal, no, sorry, intra-city student council report. I'll turn that over to Jamie.
This year we haven't been able to fit in a proper ICSC meeting yet just due to scheduling conflicts.
Jamie, can you tip the microphone?
So we haven't had a proper meeting yet just because we've had some scheduling conflicts and we try not to make kids drive during Packer game traffic because it gets dangerous. But we did get to do a bonding activity at the Green Bay escape rooms. So we had two groups and we each got to do an escape room and it was a really great activity for problem-solving skills and working together as a group, so that was really, really fun. And then just updates with each of the schools, so East, their musical this year is Billy Elliot and they also did a nine eleven fundraiser for local firefighters and police, so that's really great. Preble, the girls tennis team won against Bayport and their FFA was named outstanding group of the year by the Wildlife Sanctuary. Southwest's musical is Footloose and their girls volleyball won over Preble as well as their volleyball and NHS raised nine hundred dollars for the Walk to End Alzheimer's. West, their boys soccer team won against Marionette. And East also extended a thanks to the West students for their sportsmanship at the East versus West game on Saturday. And so that's pretty much it. We have homecoming coming up for all of the schools, and we're getting ready for October meetings. And that's all.
Thank you. Next is the Legislative Liaison Report, and I'll turn that over to Laura.
We have two items, the first one is State Superintendent Tony Evers was expected to submit his budget request today. For the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one school years. In that budget, he will be proposing many things, but I'm just gonna focus on his plans for the, the big five school districts in the state. These school, these schools educate about twenty percent of all Wisconsin students. And his budget offers some additional financial supports and policy changes just for these districts. So some of the highlights include proposed money for additional learning time, which basically equals funding for expansion of summer school programs. Enhanced payments for teachers who are National Board certified, as well as financial incentives to educators who teach in high-poverty schools in the big five. Expansion of funding for the Urban Leadership Institute, which is a program that trains principals and offers coaching and support to these five school districts. The budget also offers more money for three K startups and expansions with the additional benefit of being able to count four K students. At one, one point zero FTE instead of the current point five FTE. In addition, the proposed budget also supports projects that work with local adjacent sectors, such as healthcare, childcare, higher education and housing. And I, I think it's important to note that these proposals are based on feedback from the leadership in these five districts. In our case, Dr. Langenfeld. Number two is just a reminder that the Region Three WASB Regional Meeting is scheduled on Tuesday, October sixteenth. At the Holiday Inn Hotel and Suites. Sandy, I believe will be, if you wanna attend, can help you with that process. There's a four o'clock workshop, followed by dinner and a meeting that includes the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty legislative session preview. They are expecting activity in the legislature with regard to, among many things, the Blue Ribbon Commission on School Funding. Issues around school safety and student mental health. And I will be going to that, we went last year, I found it helpful and informative. That's my report.
Okay, I'm also going to that.
I mean, Sandy, you were, if people wanna go, they should let you know, right? Like you did like a group signup last year. If they want, if I wanna go to the four o'clock.
Let me know that as well, so you wanna go to the four?
Yeah, I, I wanna go to the four o'clock, you know, the meeting before the meeting. So, you gotta try this year?
What's that on again?
Uh, hang on, I can, I think I can, I think I've got it.
What's the date on that again?
Sixteenth.
The Tuesday.
The regular meeting was at six, the dinner was at six thirty.
It looks like, it looks like the title is, um, how to plan and conduct effective board meetings, school board meetings. Are you gonna go to our?
I don't know, I could.
I, I feel like that's an area that I could learn something from, so I'm gonna go.
Katie, did you want pre or no? Not the pre, I'm working, but I can get to the regular meeting.
Let me just check my availability for pre.
There won't be any, last year, we voted on leadership for our region, but we won't need to do that this year, so.
No.
Yeah, why don't you sign me up for the pre, I'll go. And then, also, just those of us who've been on the board a while know about the January meeting, and I don't know if I've talked to you about.
We exchanged an email today or a text or something, and I gave her the dates, and you were gonna work on it, yeah.
And that's one that's, I found especially helpful when I first got on the board. There's a lot of opportunity to hear a lot of what other districts are doing. And, but it's not a very, very good, I learned a ton every year when I went.
Many, many breakout sections.
Yeah.
Sessions of.
So you can kinda pick and choose what you're interested in learning and hearing what other districts are doing and things like that, so it's a, it's a good conference if you can.
You said you could go just for one day. Yeah, you don't have to go for the whole three days, I mean, it's hard for people to come to three, so, yeah.
We usually have gone, we try to save the district money on Tuesday night, so we get up and leave at five-thirty in the morning Wednesday. Cause it starts about eight, eight-thirty.
Right.
On Wednesday, and then if you stay the whole time, we're there Wednesday night, Thursday night, in the hotel. And then it's a half-day on Friday, I think it's done at noon on Friday, or one o'clock.
Funny stuff to see on, on that last day as well.
Oh, yeah.
So they'll not probably need to know within the next month, so I can raise your hotel reservation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. That, that completes my report.
All right, thank you, Laura. Next, we have Board Member School Visits Update. Anybody wants to share?
I'm going to Southwest on Wednesday. I haven't been anywhere yet.
I was kind of in Alaska, I missed the whole first week of school.
I like to give the schools a couple of weeks to start the school year before, I did go to How's block party.
So did I, it was lovely, it was fun, John, John Magus was in the dunk tank.
Yes.
I have pictures.
And Michelle was coaching the pictures.
There's pictures on that too.
Get closer.
And I went to Wes' nine-eleven, Run the Stairs event, and that was, that was fun.
I went to Dan's, no, I went to Doty, and I did a guest teacher lesson, which was awesome, for fifth grade. We talked about local government and how to be advocates in their school, and how they can work with the school board to advocate for what they need in their school building. Which was really fun, and we did a physical activity break too. Made me wanna be a classroom teacher again. And then I was at East on Friday, actually, and got a full tour, it was awesome.
Good.
Yeah, great school.
I kinda lost track of how many schools I went to there for a while, I went to three of the four back-to-school convocations. And went to a few other schools, went out to Frable, was that How? There might be more.
I just stopped in at East today for a little bit, say hi, so.
Good, I think I like that.
I have, I have one, I have one, one building I last year promised to visit before September. And then as my personal family schedule looks to be improving quite a bit, I'll be getting with it again probably in mid-late October. And paying to a lot, a lot more of those.
All right, next is District Events. I actually have something with that, there's, we have three community advisory groups. One that is our BayLink, one for Bridges, and one for City Stadium. And that is composed of people from, you know, our district and the people from the business that, you know, the dealers, at the car automotive. And it's usually the teacher, I've, I've been going to the BayLink meetings, I've been to two or three of them last year. It's the teacher, it's, it's a whole group. And Lori Peacock asked me if we, she thought it would be good to have a board member go to those meetings, just because it's, you know, it's a interface with the community. And our supporters of the program and things like that. So I'm willing to continue on BayLink, I would rather not have all three, right now, they're all being put on my schedule. So I'm looking for, and I think it's good to have it be again, you know, the same person, they get to know you and, you know, you can get to know them and things like that, so. And let me, I'm planning, the Bridges meeting is coming up probably too soon for anybody to, to do. Because I think it's this week, yeah, it's Thursday. So, and that's been on my calendar for a while, so I can go to that unless somebody wants to, to do it this Thursday. But I would just ask if you're interested, the, and we'll have to ask, Lori's not here. I assume that once it shows up on a Thursday, that's the usual day they're going to meet.
What time?
That one's at seven fifteen at West.
That's correct, Brenda.
That's.
They typically follow.
The same day of the week, yeah, so if Thursday isn't good for you, then, then that's, you know, don't sign up. But, and they're early in the morning, the BayLink one starts at seven fifteen also, I think. So that one's at West, and they meet.
How often do they meet?
Every couple of months, so it's not a.
Quarterly?
I mean, let me just check.
Once every three months, maybe? So it's not a huge commitment.
So like Bridges is from seven fifteen to eight forty-five?
Then there's a, City Stadium just got put, I just noticed.
They don't have them scheduled all past this month.
Yeah, I think the, the BayLink was the most well-established, in terms of setting meeting dates and having the right people and things like that. And then the City Stadium and Bridges was, was less so, so that's the first time I've seen the, that invitation, oh, here it is. And the City Stadium Advisory Meeting actually is after school, that one's three thirty to four thirty, and that's on October eighth, which is a Monday. So that would be, they probably are gonna meet every, you know, four times a year on a Monday. So, anyway, let me know if you, if you, like I said, I'll take care of this Thursday with Bridges. But then after that, if you have, and the Bridges, do you know that, the Bridges is our construction program for our kids? Where they actually go out and do a build in the community, they, they've worked with Neighbor Works, they've worked with.
Habitat.
Habitat, the last two years, they did a brand-new build, other times they've done remodeling, things like that. And then the City Stadium is automotive, you probably saw that when you were at East. And then BayLink is the manufacturing plant that's at West High School.
Seven fifteen AM or PM?
AM.
All right, I can do the Bridges one.
Okay, this Thursday, or?
Know if I can go this Thursday, but I can, if I can, I can take it on after that.
Okay, I'll plan this Thursday, and then I'll just let, is Lori, who sent me this calendar, was that Lori Peacock? Okay, so I'll let Lori know, and then she'll just send you the invite after this.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
I can do City Stadium on the eighth, that's three thirty to four thirty?
Yeah, okay, and you wanna take, you wanna be that person?
I can be that person, but depending on which Mondays they meet.
Okay, all right.
It can, well, still be done by four thirty, be done by four thirty, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea, somebody that can, that can take place, I mean, and you could both go too, you know.
Well, and actually, if they're done by four thirty, we can still get here in time for a meeting.
Okay, so I'll put you on as first contact for the City Stadium.
City Stadium.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then I do think that there will be, Lori had also mentioned, Peacock had also mentioned the possibility of us being represented on some of the turbocharge subgroups. And so I'm still gonna get that information to us, and again, that's a community TC, it's our district, it's UWGB. Working on various subsets of the turbo, turbocharge efforts. All right, any other district events, Andrew?
So we have on October nineteenth to twenty-first, we have the Seventeenth Operation Snowball Event, and that'll be at Elder Leopold. That's a leadership retreat with.
Seventeen?
Seventeen.
It started before I got on the board?
No, cause there's two a year.
Two a year, I was gonna say, it has been going down for seventeen years.
Well, that's why, okay.
Yeah, but it is the, yeah, so it's.
So it's been eight nights, seven years?
First two years, there was just one and then.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
That was the kitchen help.
They'll be at, they'll be at Elder Leopold. And the first, traditionally, the, the fall event is completely Green Bay area public school function. In cooperation with the local five oh one C three. And then the, the spring event is kind of the reverse. The five oh one C three takes the lead in partnership with the GBAPS students. One additional, one additional thing that we're, we're close to working out, but not quite there yet, is we might be running the middle school version called Operation Snowflake. Co-located, so you're sharing the, yeah, that's, Snowflurry is elementary, anyway, that's, that's.
Flurry, flake and ball.
Yes, and so we're hoping to, if, if we can figure out the right, the right way to get the right mix of middle school students. Cause the self-selection works somewhat okay for high school, but middle school, it's, it's a little different. And we're hoping to, looking for ways to reach out to get, get a very broad cross, cross-section. Reach out across all the, all the middle schools, and so that, that allows you to start small with something, cause it can be, it can be embedded. So there'd be certain things make sense to join, like talent show and meals, and then you can go on different programming tracks for the, for the age groups, so.
All right, next is System Reports, that TTM Learning is first, and that'll be facilitated by Katie.
Thank you, Brenda, we have several motions, I will begin with. I move that the AgriScience Dual-Credit Course Essential Documents as presented be approved?
Seconded.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the Teenage Parent Program Course Essential Documents as presented be approved?
Seconded.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the Officiating and Coaching Course Essential Document as presented be approved?
Seconded.
Sandy? Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that Child Development, Development Across Lifespan and Foundations of Early Childhood Education Course Essential Documents as presented be approved?
Seconded.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the Introduction to Theater Arts Course Essential Document and World Drumming Course Essential Document and Resources as presented be approved?
Seconded.
Sandy?
Shelton? Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the Changes to the Head Start Program Guidelines and Operational Procedures Handbook, including selection criteria for the twenty eighteen-nineteen program year. And changes to the Policy Council Bylaws for the twenty eighteen-nineteen program year, as presented be approved?
Seconded.
Sandy? McCoy?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the Selection and Reconsideration of Textbooks and Other Classroom Instructional Materials and Resources, Policy three sixty-one. And Procedures for the Selection and Reconsideration of Classroom Instructional Materials slash Resources Rule, three sixty-one rule, as presented be approved?
Seconded.
Sandy? Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the Selection and Reconsideration of Library Media Centers Materials Resources, Policy three sixty-one point one. And Procedures for the Selection Management Reconsideration of Library Media Center Materials slash Resources Rule, three sixty-one point one, as presented be approved?
Seconded.
Sandy? Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the Public Complaints About Instructional Library Media Center Materials and Resource Policies, eight seventy-one. Procedures for Handling Policy, Public Complaints About Instruction Library Media Center Materials and Resource Rule, eight seventy-one rule. And Request for Reconsideration of Instructional Library Media Center Materials or Resources Exhibit, eight seventy-one exhibit, as presented be approved?
Seconded.
Sandy?
McCoy? Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker? Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
And that concludes my report.
And it just, we had a long discussion about all of these things that we just approved in less than three minutes, I think.
That's right, to summarize.
We had a long discussion, long discussion about all of those, uh, two, or last week at our work session.
Last week, yeah.
Alright, thank you Katie, next is our organizational support, and that will be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
Okay, under, um, Business and Finance Discussion, Public Comment and Action Items, uh, we have no items, under Human Resources, um, Discussion, Public Comment and Action Items, um, we have, uh, Posted Item About Public Comment at Board of Education Meetings Regarding District Hires, um, since this is a, um, since this is a board, a internal board operational situation, it doesn't have an administrative recommended motion attached to it, so, um, this is provided on the agenda, and it would be up to someone to, um, I guess make a motion if something's going to change there, so I would turn it back to the chair. I, I have, I have no motion to make, so I-
Okay.
Turn it back to the chair.
Alright, um, is there anyone who has a motion that they'd like to make, just to, we can start with a motion and go from there?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to continue with the process that we have in place when it comes to public comment and board meetings and agenda items.
I'll, I'll second.
I'd like to propose an amendment-
Okay.
To that, I would, uh, continue the practice, um, with the exclusion of public hires.
Public?
Of, with this, the exclusion of district hires.
Okay.
In fact, I don't want the discussion opportunity for the actual hiring process.
But not in-
The process, or the-
The, the actual acting, the action items that we take to hire people.
Okay, well, that, that would be the discussion on the process, and then-
The discussion on district hires, individual hires.
So, can you, so we have an amendment we're working on, can you-
Okay, I move that the Public Comment at the Board of Education Meetings continue as practice with the exclusion of district hires. Does that make sense?
But you don't intend that to affect the open forum, just the second part?
Right. The open forum is the open forum.
Yeah, as-
I don't need to seek out additional public input when we're voting to hire people.
So as, as written, does the, as currently written, does this amendment, is this amendment written in such way that it would also affect open forum?
I'm thinking, legal counsel has enough-
And she will tell us.
I mean, we could make the motion much more specific, I suppose, go ahead.
So my, my concern, going to the original motion, is the board never formally adopted the procedures of the second, um, open forum, a- actually, you've never adopted, other than what the policy says, which is that you provide a public comment period, there's never been a, a formal motion that has adopted the process of the one open forum at the beginning of the session, and then commenting on individual action items on the board agenda, so we may, Rhonda may need to make that original motion even more specific with respect to, rather than saying as currently provided, because we've never formally adopted that.
That's why my motion indicates as practice, because that's how we've been-
But yours is in-
Practicing.
Can I read it back, please Sandy? The main motion, the main motion?
I'm gonna try, um, so Rhonda moved that we continue with the process we have in place regarding agenda, regarding public discussion of agenda items.
Don't we have it in, we have it in, are you saying we have it in practice, but we don't have it in place?
Right.
What you, what you could do for your motion is that you could read the instructions that Brenda currently reads at the beginning of public forum, 'cause that's specific, that has never been formally adopted by the board, but that specifically provides for those two sessions, and then Katie could make a motion for amendment to exclude, um, from that second session, the district hires.
Oh, I need to read it, I'm not gonna be able to.
Oh, here it is.
So the cleanest way to probably do that is to ask unanimous consent, for the chair to ask unanimous consent to withdraw the motion and the amendment and just-
Start over.
Start over.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That's fine, is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't hear that, I'm so sorry, what?
We just had a unanimous consent that we're starting over.
To clear the table, and you're making a motion again.
Okay, yes.
Fresh start. I'm reading the whole thing, to be safe.
That the board, I, I think you can move, because we've never formally adopted that, and that's really the cleanest-
Right, can she just put it in, she doesn't have to read the whole thing.
Sandy has it.
'Cause I read it earlier this meeting.
And Sandy has those instructions.
You can just move to adopt the, what the document entitled.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I move to continue with the public engagement opportunities that we have been currently practicing in open session board meetings, as stated in this document that was read in the beginning of tonight's meeting on September seventeenth, two thousand eighteen.
What's the title of that document?
Public Engagement Opportunities.
Okay, so maybe just, do you wanna just define, just-
Well, and I would say this, can I, there's a date on this, which is February seventh, so we have been practicing this since then, what's the date on that? Why is there a date on that?
We did it at the, um, February work session, if I remember correctly.
Okay, so-
Which was by the seventh.
Probably right around there.
Yeah.
So something we've been practicing since February seventh, I don't know if you want a date?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm, this management coming out, I'm gonna, I will second the motion.
And, so can you read what you have, and Rhonda listen, so that reflects what you-
So, basically, I'm, I'm sorry, this is hard to follow all of you guys, that we continue with the current practice as described earlier this, at the meeting, is that what you wanna do?
I think it should just reference the document.
Yeah.
Reference the document.
Can you, do you, are you okay with just referencing the document, Rhonda, rather than describing it as earlier this meeting?
Right.
So, so read-
That we continue-
Sure.
With the, the public engagement opportunities as described.
And, and then the title of that document.
Which is called Public Engagement Opportunities.
Okay.
And then we could ineptune amend, uh, attach that ineptune, Sandy?
So they know what it is.
Actually, I, I won't have to put the whole thing in the amendments.
Yeah, okay.
Not, not attach it in the amendments.
Okay.
The whole thing ago in the amendments.
Okay, okay.
So, okay, so that's your motion to, uh, continue the, the practice in the document entitled?
Yeah, do you want me to try and give this another go?
No, I think it's good.
No, I think I got it, I, okay, and I seconded that.
And then-
I would add an amendment to include the words with the exclusion of district hires, is that sufficient?
So can you look at it?
Can you look at it?
Where it fits?
And then the exact sentence you would add that to?
Okay, if you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items that are posted on tonight's agenda, or any other matters you wish to share with the board with the exclusion of district hires.
Is that the first paragraph?
It's the second paragraph.
Is that the one that talks about voting? And items that they're voting on?
No, no.
I, I don't think that's a sentence, 'cause that will, that will go back to the general session.
Let me read. Okay, the board will also permit public participation during agenda items that the Board of Education will be voting on, as noted on the board's agenda with the exception, with the exclusion of district hires.
I, I believe it's noticed as district personnel.
Yeah, it's, when you say district hires, and-
I'm just going from the, the verbiage that was listed in the, on the agenda tonight.
Uh, I, I look at district hires as, uh, i- it's not necessarily speaking of, of a person, individual person.
That's what I'm trying to-
And, and, yeah, I, I mean, I would support excluding anything that, that's a personnel matter, anything that, uh, specifically identifies an individual.
An individual, okay, so-
Now, if we're talking about district hires in general, we're coming in-
No, no, we need that kind of input, no, I'm talking about-
So do you have better words to, for her to put in?
Put in towards.
I, I can put words in.
So the-
With the exception of in-
Here, I'll take a few out, make room, okay.
It's when we vote on contracts, can we-
No, it's not just contracts, though.
There, there's been motions for salary increases for, for district personnel, there's been, um, motions of transfers, um, support staff, so it's not just hires, hires will limit it to hires.
Okay, okay, so then?
So are you, are you withdrawing that?
Well, what about individual personnel matters?
Individual-
I think if you just say personnel matters.
Personnel matters?
Personnel matters.
Well, I would say individual-
Individual personnel, individual personnel matters.
Yeah.
And that gets to the language of the exception to the open meetings law, I, I think that was part of the discussion last week, was we have this exception under the open meetings law to deliberate in closed session regarding personnel matters.
Right.
Oh, okay, good.
So that would be consistent with that closed session.
So Sandy, can you read what we-
So that one paragraph, okay?
Okay.
The board will also permit public participation during other agenda items the Board of Education will be voting on, as noted on the board's agenda with the exclusion of individual personnel matters.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I second that, oh.
Alright, so, is there discussion?
I'm, um, yeah, I'm gonna vote no on the amendment, um, this is a, this is a situation, and I, I hope we don't spend all night on it, because I think the actu- the actual impact on people actually speaking is probably going to be very small, if someone really wishes to talk about something, um, they can talk about whatever they wish in open forum anyways, however, the, the decision, the decision we're faced with here is, do we do some, having just expanded o- open comment quite a bit, do, do we want the, I guess, the takeaway from this meeting to be that, um, we've chipped away a little bit at what we have the, both rounds of comment on, um, versus what benefit might that have, and to me, the benefit, the, the theoretical benefit of maybe people being, um, that theoretically, people might do such a deep dive into the, um, such a deep dive into our, the vagaries of our open forum comments, that it might make them more or less comfortable with, with coming here, um, I don't really see that happening, and the, as discussed extensively last week, the chain of events that would need to happen for the board to be legally liable for public comments is a, a very high bar, which involves someone speaking about hires, which they usually don't, and it being untrue, and then a majority vote of no on a hire, which I, I don't know that that has ever happened in my time on the board, um, and the information from the public shown to be, shown to be false, so I think someone who made the comment of a, um, solution looking for a problem, I don't feel that that problem exists yet, and on, on balance, my, my vote is to not, not reduce public input opportunities, I think the chair can, I think the chair can gavel down things that are, or appear to be illegal, uh, there are, Wisconsin does have protected classes, if someone, in the extremely unlikely event that someone were to start talking about an applicant, I don't think you should have this applicant, because they do slash don't want to have children or something, and, which is a illegal question of an employment applicant, that could be, that could be gavelled down, um, if the chair wasn't sure, the chair could ask counsel, so, I just see it as a solution looking for a problem, my vote, uh, my vote will be no on the amendment.
Can I just interrupt one second, there's flash flood warnings, do you wanna let the students go home?
In the middle of a flash flood?
Flood in Main Street, flooded.
Really?
Flash flood until ten forty-five.
Oh, until ten forty-five?
Did you drive, are you?
Yeah, maybe they should-
How far do you have to go?
Uh, I live, um, a couple blocks off of that, in Torrance.
Oh, that's a lot.
I have a, I have a large vehicle, I could take you both home, and I could do it quickly, even in between, before the closed session, so if, if you want, I can do-
I think you could.
You drove though?
Yeah.
We can, we can look, we can look at it.
Do you wanna let them go, excuse them, so they can make phone calls home to see what their parents want? I, I'm just-
What their parents want, you're, you're going, you're riding your, um, with your dad?
Well, I think it is, I think it is now, yeah.
Okay, okay, so do you wanna go call and just see what your parents want you to do?
Sorry.
And tell them that we can-
Once a mom, always a mom.
That we have a board member with a big car that can catch a mom.
I'm thinking, don't let her go.
And then we, well, and then they can figure out if you can get your car somehow, all that stuff, yeah.
Yeah, or if it's even that, I mean, maybe, maybe not that.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, I mean, it would be a matter of her getting a ride to school.
And tech- technically, the, technically, the flood warning is for east and southeast Brown County, so it's kinda kicks in on the east side of the river.
Shouldn't she, east side is where it's, where, at least what I see on the-
Oh, okay, oh, okay, so she's, but we can-
So it may, it may not be that bad.
Hudson Road, look.
I mean, you can go home too, if you want, with the note, if you had a different ride, you can call them, but it's up to you.
We're getting into the parliamentary stuff now, and I have all those votes out.
Alright, alright. Alright.
Yeah, we're right on, we're right on the edge of the, the-
Flood?
Flood box, so.
Okay, alright, so-
Is that gonna work, if I just, for, for Noah, I'll just, his mom's house is about six minutes from here, so I'll just take care of it in between.
Oh, in between, close session, sure.
The end and close session, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. All right, so Andrew just finished speaking, that's where we left off, right? Okay. All right. Noah?
I think the proposed amendment, as it looks, prob, I think it looks worse to the public than it actually is, as far as limiting their speech. As was already mentioned, I don't think it does very much to limit what somebody may say during their public speaking opportunity, and I think it looks quite, it looks as if, although I acknowledge that's not what is happening, they're trying to limit their speech more than you are. I acknowledge that, that's not what's happening here again, but I think just the consequences of it and its appearance to the public are more negative than the actual potential issues that could arise from it, that I don't see really how the amendment is worth it in its cur, in its current form.
I'm supporting it. I mean, I guess, I'll just say one thing, that, that, if we want, I don't think the timing of having public input right before we're about to vote on whether we're hiring someone is very satisfying to even the people giving us the input, because we would have to take their input and somehow do something with it, as we're being expected to vote. I would rather see us figure out some way to have public input, and which we already have some, in terms of interview committees and things, but, but there could be possibility for people to have input into, you know, for hiring a principal, or a associate superintendent, or executive director, or something like that, that people would have an option to have input into what do they think we should be looking for in that position, you know, if you're a parent at a school and we're, we're hiring a principal, what, you know, what do you think should be the, what do you, what would you hope the skill set would be, or, you know, what do you see as the needs of the school that the principal would have to, to tackle, and, and those kinds of things? But for us to, to put that out there, that we want to have public input about hires is, is disingenuous, I think, because it puts us in a situation where we really can't, at that last minute, really do anything, do anything with it.
Unless, unless a decision is made by an individual board member that the public comment is going to override the confidence that, that member had in the, the process. I, I would suggest that we withdraw the, the motions altogether, and come back, you know, as an agenda item, with a, a complete thorough description of our hiring process, of those opportunities that are available for, for people to comment, make it very, very plain, so that we know what we're dealing with, and when we can sit here and say that the public has an opportunity to comment, but have we really made that plain and clear? We haven't. To talk in depth about the, the hiring process that we have in place, particularly for administration, for principals, for, for those more higher level positions, you know, even to the point of the very important positions of teachers, if you want to go that route, but to really put a, a full description of that out there. And then, you know, once that's out there, continue the discussion, but I really think that's necessary first, so that, that's my suggestion on it.
Is that a motion to postpone this action to a future time?
Can I add that before you answer that?
It's a motion to table, a motion, I think.
It's not really a, a...
Go ahead, and...
So, at last meeting, Mr. Dorff asked to look at Policies 533 and, I believe it's 221.1, which is the administrative hiring, so I've, I've started that work. Unfortunately, it's an onion, so as I peel that away, there's a few other policies that will need to be revised as you start revising those policies. But I think there is a real opportunity in those policies to clearly define public input and the role for parents and staff and community members in that process. I know Gene does have a very well-defined process, but our policies in those areas have, are, are pretty slim, and have not been revised since 2004. So that would give us an opportunity in policy to define public input in that process. And I, those will be coming in, given when the October board meeting is, I can't get them to you until November, based on our process for revising policies, so it's scheduled for the November meetings.
I, I don't think that it's, you, you've got that coming up for November, and we don't have any, knock on wood here, we're, we're not anticipating any higher level hires at this point, so...
And if we were, we...
We can afford the time, I would think.
We have, oh, as you've seen in the principal hirings and in other hirings, we have already included public participation in that, so we would continue to follow that process, and the policies will come in November.
If we were to happen.
If you were to happen, yeah.
Yeah, but right now, we're...
I move, I, I make a motion to postpone to a definite time, which would be, to be placed into the December meeting cycle.
I thought we said November.
No, he's saying the policies are coming November, and that would give you till December.
Presentation in the hiring policy updated in November.
Then we would know, then we would know what 533 is, before we do...
So, so it's, you're thinking that take, will take longer than two weeks? Because I'm thinking it would come at a work session.
Right, but the...
So I'm, I'm confused as to why it needs an extra month, tell me, Andrew.
Because you're gonna revise the policies in November, you're gonna know what the policies say, so you will know in December, then.
Oh, to come back to this.
So then this will be, this will be back, this will be reopened as it sits right now.
In December, okay.
Then, because then we'll, in order to be able to debate about whether or not, okay, so did what we created in November, you know, so, yeah, that's a motion to postpone to a definite time, and then everything would just be frozen until December cycle.
And I'll, I'll second that, be my hope that what we get in November will have enough to it that it satisfies the legitimate concerns we have about allowing public comment in an appropriate fashion.
Can I ask a question? So what you're talking about is, is that maybe the public's not aware of the hiring process, of where they can interject public comment? But I think it's really important not to lose sight of the fact that we vote, we represent first and foremost the public, who pay the salaries of the people that we vote to hire, and I think it's, and I just want to go on record, so it's very clear, that I personally will never limit public comment when it comes to taking public tax dollars and spending it. Again, this isn't our money, it's theirs. I think it's also very important to reiterate the fact that we are allowing public comment in open meetings for every other agenda item, where again, we spend their money except for this. So I personally just want to go on record that I will never, ever limit that.
I don't think I'm likely to, to limit it either, but for the purposes of what we're discussing, if the postponement and then the, the procedures in place would stand then if anything happened between now and December.
But I think it's interesting, we're taking it and we're kind of spinning it into another area that's not really what the conversation is about. It's not that the public are confused about where they can speak when we're, when we're spending their money, it, they know perfectly well where that can happen. They also want to be able to be on record in an open meeting, a public meeting that their money pays for, this isn't a confusing thing for them. It's not that they don't understand where they can have, you know, an opinion, they should be able to come to a public meeting and actually have an opinion where every other agenda item lies. I think the risk that you take to do that, to remove that in the agenda, will actually blow up and be so much more of a problem than anything that could happen because of an agenda item being discussed in public. I truly believe that. I think this is a can of worms you don't want to go into, I think it's important that you really understand, we are not a private company, we are a public entity, we do not, this is not our money.
Then what do I say to the members of the public who've reached out to me and said, "That's crazy, and it doesn't make any sense to have public comment on hiring like that"?
I, here's what I would say to that, I think we all have to make a decision about this.
But those are members of the public, too.
Yep.
And their views are legitimate as well.
And, and I agree, and so you, I'm just going on record so that it's very, very clear to the public where I stand on this. You have the ability to say whatever you want and represent as you wish, as, as you're supposed to, and I would encourage you to do that, but I'm just making my feelings on this topic, you know, we had, what, an hour and 40 minutes of discussion last meeting about something very specific, and now we've kind of massaged it into an area of, it's just, they don't understand where they can actually have public comment opportunities, and I find that this is very disingenuous, I think this is actually not what the, the concerns are, I don't think it's, that we just need to let them know where they can step in and do this, I don't think that's what it is. And you have the right to do what you, you want to, I'm just stating this for myself personally.
Okay, thank you for letting me know I have that right.
Well, no, of course you do, everyone does, I'm just making sure it's clear that where I stand on this and how I feel about it, which I have the right to do, because, you know, it's a, it's a decision that I will have to make, obviously, just like you will. But I also, again, I, I truly believe that the slippery slope that you take by removing the opportunity will be so much worse, I just believe that.
I don't think that the community actually knows how to get involved, I think we need to be expanding that. So, I mean, I disagree with you on that point, I think, like, people know that there's like an open forum and they can come, but I do agree with your point that it, it, people can come and say what they want, but in terms of effectiveness of actually, like, the decision making, we need to expand that opportunity so people can, like, speak ahead of time.
I'm all for, I'm all for that, sure.
Right, so, I, I, to me, both are true, I, I think we should be doing that, I personally don't, at this time, feel comfortable taking that opportunity away, I understand everyone's concerns. For me, where I am right now, the, I think, Noah, you said it really well, I don't see it being, the pros don't out, you know, the, the pros don't outweigh the cons, or whatever, you know what I'm trying to...
Whatever direction, yeah.
Whatever direction you're on, on the pros and the cons, but what I would also say too, is, and I think I was pretty clear about this last week, I think, in addition to that, we need to be really exploring strategically and, and bringing people in, because I think if we do that, and we, and we're able to illustrate that their voice is actually more meaningful throughout the process, then it will be more meaningful and we will have less people who are coming in here at the end, but I still think they should have that opportunity, so I just want to go on the record and say that.
All right, so, let's see, we have...
The motion is on postponement of this matter.
Do we have to deal with the other motions that are...
Questions on the adoption of the motion to postpone, so you deal with that first, if that fails, then you deal with the amendment, then the...
But if that passes, we can...
But if the motion to postpone passes, that...
I'm just picking up the whole thing, and, the whole thing, and putting it in December as it stands right now.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Noah.
Yes, Noah, thank you. All right, so anybody else before we take a vote? All right, and we are taking a vote to postpone, and you said you wanted to be specific, but your motion isn't specific.
He said till December.
To the December meeting cycle.
All right, to the, okay, and that assumes, we don't have to make a motion that assumes we're bringing the policies back in November, that'll just happen.
I will have them in November.
If we happen to not, this is still on December unless a different motion would be changed.
It'll happen, all right, Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Aye. Carried 7-0, all right, we have a plan.
Yeah, that was the only organizational support item. I move that the consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Second.
And we have the October board meetings.
We have to take a vote.
Okay.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
Okay, I moved that the board...
We're gonna not go into closed session, it's not a time-sensitive matter, even the weather issues, we'll wait till next, until we're on the board first meeting.
Okay.
All right, so, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So...
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.